All right, so I'd like to call this planning commissioner meeting to order for November 14th, 2018. Let's go to the pledge.
I worship the Lord in the name of his majesty the nation of America and to the glory of our which he stands, one nation under God, in the highest order, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we are all here except for Wen Doisick that she says if we need her, you can call her and she'll come in, but want to get better hopefully. All right, so we've had a couple of issues with our agenda simply because think we're mislabeled and we're still learning stuff. So, I'm wanting to make some amendments to the agenda. First of all, I want to make a motion that the first item on the agenda is just a casual discussion review of the new draft of our general plan. Does anyone want to second that? Or say a vote? Aye? Aye? All right. So, probably gonna, we're gonna have to have a hearing on this at some point and probably post it online so we can get some feedback. But the general plan map is the colorful one right there that we are trying to reorganize somewhat, so. This isn't a hearing, it's, we're just talking about it, so.
So, one of the things that I am very interested in as a commissioner is I really want to get public feedback on this map. So, I would really invite everybody who's interested to please take a look at it, give us your comments, concerns, et cetera. You know, we're, I feel like we're here trying to represent your interests and so we need to know what your interests are. So, I know there's not a lot of, not a lot of our citizens here tonight, but we'd sure like to get feedback on it if you would, so.
Do you have a copy of the map?
And can we get this posted on the website? Maybe labeled draft or something?
Yeah, and this is a preliminary, just a first draft. So, anybody who would like to get one, we'll pitch out when I'm glad to hear from you.
Okay, and did any of us have any concerns or comments on anything?
Well, I'll just bring out in the conversation I had with Frank Lindhart today, he suggested that we designate a zone for RVs, but as I was discussing, or not RVs, but you know, for that type of use for recreational use. As you and I were just discussing, I don't know if we need to designate that individually versus just a mixed-use commercial PD type of a zone, so we need to kind of look at that and see.
So, are we kind of thinking that stuff like recreational, stuff like RVs or whatever would be located in the same general area as commercial?
Yes, or directly adjacent to it.
Yeah.
What was feature six?
Feature six, I think that's, I don't know, I think that's just something that came in from Google Earth, you know, uninvited. I don't know what that is. It's not relative to the.
Do you have a question?
It's a landmark of no one knows where it is.
Bruce Hubert, I live off of Bubbling Wells. That particular area that's accessed by Bubbling Wells currently is zoned in conflict with the original intent, not zone, the general plan, is in conflict with the original intent for that area, which is more rural, more consistent with a natural environment. And the CCNRs for that area from 1988 indicate minimum 10 acres. My suggestion that we should look at that very carefully and think in terms of, in the future going forward in that area, to try to retain that more rural and natural environment, consistent with the CCNRs for that area, and avoiding conflicts.
Can you point to where that, I'm not familiar with exactly.
This is your property out there. CCNRs from 1998 are known void since.
1988? And I beg to differ.
No, they're not, they're legal binding documents, they're registered.
I know it's kind of small and hard to see, but just.
Is this, what is this, a proposed general plan?
Yeah, yeah, it's a draft, it's just a working draft.
Yeah, so the brown is.
This is CCR from Ted Gubler.
Where's the current, that one, I think it shows on there. So, Bubbling Wells is. No, Bubbling Wells comes in right here. So, we're talking about this whole area, basically everything above the Highway 59, this whole area.
So, this is current agricultural and that's currently.
One acre.
But that's what is currently adopted. This is the current adopted one.
Yeah, correct. And but we're talking about making these more appropriate as we go forward. It's even indicating half acre and one acre, which, there's, there's no half acre, one acre out there currently.
That's, that's why we changed it to low density.
Well, that actually becomes open space transitional out there, which is.
Yeah, I can't tell where this map, because this doesn't show anything. This doesn't match this shape, this shape would be here.
Yeah, that's, this was all in.
So, the proposal, what is it called?
Low density.
What does that mean?
One acre reward acre.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not low enough. It should be minimum two acres.
All right, well, 10 acres counts as low density.
Oh, did I have to talk in? This one here, do you have enough of those?
We can make one.
I love the, I love the idea of CCNRs, I live in an area also that has CCNRs and what we found is the town ordinance is trumped the CCNRs. And CCNRs would be handled on a civil basis rather than, but, yeah.
My understanding is that the town is not obligated to be consistent with the CCNRs?
But it's nice.
Why? You can still put a lawsuit.
It's nice and pleasant to do, because yes, I, I hear you, yes.
Mayor, I wanted to ask you, since you live up that direction, what is your opinion on the roads? So, right now, there's a lot of what I call D9 roads, or just like the D9 went through there, and you know, it kind of messes in some areas. What's your opinion on that? Road base? Leave them private like they are right now for street improvements? Dedicate them, pay them? What's your opinion on how that should be handled in the neighborhood?
So, I personally maintain, myself, using a backhoe, the hard way, two and a half miles of road to get to my house. Starting from, basically from Frank Lindhart's property, this is the last one, he maintains it up to his property, I maintain it from there on in. Personally, I don't have a problem with that. It's a private road, it's not public, nope, there's no other houses, I'm the only one using the road, so I don't have a problem with maintaining the road since I'm the only one using it. Now, as, as houses go in, especially if subdividing is to take place, at that point in time, of course, it becomes appropriate to do all the proper upgrades before you're subdividing. And I think we have, I think that stipulates what's required before we subdivide. I got no problem with that.
Well, but the upgrading of roads are private is not really an option. And that's, that's where the.
They have to be dedicated public first, right?
Right, that's where it comes into our conversation. That's, I'm asking because I want to make sure that we're doing what you guys want. Not suggesting anything other than, if, if you have a private road and you have to maintain it, can you see in the future, in five or 10 years, what's that whole area gonna look like when everything is just, this guy with the backhoe has taken care of his part, this guy's not taking care of his part, things like that. Yet, because we're not public roads, I can't do them either.
Right.
And if there are going to be public roads, I don't want our lessons paid, you know, as far as dedication goes.
My understanding is that subdividing has taken place in the past, not in the past, but there was a thought to, before you allow somebody to subdivide, dedicate their, piece of their property to the city to become a public road. Right now, there are a couple little patches, but largely it's all private. I see evolving in that direction.
So, the direction that has been suggested in that kind of a basis, that let's say you decide you want to build a house on your 20 acre piece, then for us to give you a building from that, we would require that you dedicate at least a 30 foot width on your property or the full width of your property. Now, you could be talking about, you know, 600, 700 feet of frontage.
Right.
On so many bigger parcels. You're talking about $100,000 to dedicate and put in the road improvements that we would require as a town to dedicate those roads to the town. And now, you have this pavement that's in front of your property and everywhere else is dirt roads, and does that make sense? And so, I'm just trying to get this conversation going, a couple people are here that live up that direction because it just, you know, I mean, we could do delay agreements, but they're a mess, you know, trying to enforce them later on, and people don't have the money and so the town has to encumber themselves to borrow the money and lean on the properties and be the bad guy in a situation like that. That can be hardship if you have a purpose in common, if you're unable to maintain that. There's just all kinds of issues there. I'm not sure what the right answer is, and that's why I wanted to ask you what you felt was appropriate out there.
I don't have a clear, a clean answer. We kind of have to see how things evolve.
For the sake of not having a.
Please say your name.
Anthony Chapley. For the sake of not having a patchwork road, would it be better to collect a certain amount of money? The city collect it and then do the road themselves, all at once?
Yeah, so, that's, that's been considered, but one of the negatives to that, I'll just turn it up so you can see it. He's, he's a big boy. Anyway, is that we'd be collecting money on today's cost of doing a road and then we would have in the bank account, and then that money depreciates every single year because, you know, the cost of road goes up. Yet, after six years, if I hadn't done that road, then I'd get the other way back, because we can only keep that money if it's sold in 30 years before we have to use it or lose it, kind of thing. So, it becomes a problem to fourth and I, but anyway, I didn't want to take your opinion, I just wanted to ask a couple questions.
Yeah, this is a good discussion to have, but again, this isn't the hearing for adopting this or anything, we just wanted to introduce it and let you know that it's going to be on the website, and we will have to have at least one, maybe even more hearings before we adopt this, so please look at it, jot down any questions or concerns you might have so when we actually have the hearing to adopt this and make changes or whatever, you'll come prepared with what your concerns are or whatever. So, we were just kind of wanting to put this out there to say it's a draft, please note any questions or concerns. Yes?
Mary Kennedy, yep, Bubbling Wells Way, and just in terms of being able to comment on this map, when you post it, you know, you've got explanations like "are low," well, I can guess that's residential low density, but I don't know.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have a page of definitions for that.
Okay, all right.
This was just, this was just a very preliminary, first pass it, let's take a look at the direction and see if they like it, or if there's any major concerns, that kind of thing, so.
Okay, so, do we want to?
But you're right, you need to, you need to have that, so you can have an opinion on, I guess.
Consistency in terminology would help from, from one document to the next.
Well, we're, we're trying to reduce the number of different types of zones, so that you don't have 40 different listings of zones, you know, we're trying to consolidate them a little bit, to make it a little more straightforward.
So, we should probably have another specific work meeting for this.
I definitely think we need a work meeting.
Okay. We'll have a work meeting and then we'll have a hearing.
Yeah, this is two hours work, like, mostly lights, and it's a start, but we're looking at 20 or 30 or 40 hours.
Well, if we could have a work meeting, we can project it up on the screen and change.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't mean 20, 30 or 40 hours altogether, I mean.
So, any questions?
Yes.
So, she was meet 1386, home of Matt Zion Drive, and I don't see any high density on here. Did you eliminate that?
The medium density includes that half acre. Is that what you're considering high density?
Yeah, and we've got a project that's going to go down to at least medium quarter, so.
Well, there's, there's the planned development zone pink there, and that's going to include, I think that already includes some of that stuff.
Okay. The only question I have is if I put this up against that map over there, it don't look the same.
Right, that's the.
By design.
By design, I'm fine.
We're trying to take a hodgepodge patchwork general plan and make it something that makes sense.
New beginning, start starting on that.
Okay.
Well, I mean, we'll consider that, but.
I would suggest that this is a big enough issue that it might be a good idea to have something intermediary, rather than waiting all the way to the end and then getting our opinion.
Yes, we're having a work meeting.
That's what we're talking about, yeah.
But does a work meeting include citizens?
People who show up and definitely have input in the work meeting. And then we'll have a hearing after that where there's further input and discussion.
Okay.
So, I would, I would think that, you know, that's why I was saying, look at it, jot down any ideas, because yeah, we definitely want to hear people's concerns, we want to make this fit our, our community.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Yeah, and we're aiming for transparency, that's why we're floating around.
We're not, we're not trying to slide anything under the road or anything, because we live in the community too and we want to protect our area, for sure. Okay. The next item on the agenda is to have a hearing for the zone change from residential zone five acre to open space transition for AV 1377C, owners Laberan and Holt. And are they here?
I don't see them.
Okay, well, I mean, this is pretty straightforward. So, anyway, so I motion that we open the hearing for this zone change from residential five acre to open space transition for AV 1377C. Do you want to second?
I'll say.
Okay, vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, so, this couple's been jumping through hoops to be able to build their house. And we've, yeah, I think we've figured out, Mayor, were you wanting to?
I don't really have anything to say on it, I just, I'm okay with the zone change, but they just want to get on with their life.
I don't plan them.
I would point out that the general plan is residential, a little uncharacteristic changing.
What is, I don't understand what the purpose for the zone change is.
It was a RV park that's now going to be residential.
Well, why are we doing OST?
Because they can build a house on it.
The new OST doesn't, the old one did, but the new one doesn't.
You cannot build a house.
This is, this is why. What are we doing?
Anthony Chapley, conditional use permit, you can't.
Yeah, we're kind of heading away from the unconditional use.
On the new OST?
The reason is, is we have litigation pending with that, with Alex Buzman, and we're trying to satisfy what they want to do, which was split the property. We can't split the property without them doing road improvements. And so, we, Frank, he came up with the idea, why don't we just change it to OST? And as Mayor, I can do the lots worth that's approval, then they come in, do the road for a park they really want to build on, that saves them about $50,000. And that allows them to go ahead and build a house. So, the OST, I go do the lots worth, they come back in, we only change.
The zone to residential for where they're wanting to build.
On the piece they want to build on. The other piece then is for sales, OST, and then the future person who wants to buy that and build on it, they come in and they say, I want a zone change back to R5. And so, it's just a way around the bush to fix the problem that we have with these people, you know. Anyway, it was.
But it's not like they're going to, you know, decide, oh, we're going to change it to, you know, RV park or anything.
They can't.
Because it's OST.
Even if they did, they'd still come back in.
Exactly, we'd still have to change that, that zone.
So, because of the location, we can do this because of where they're at, but we're just, we're gonna in the next meeting change right back to five acre when we get the lots worth, yeah? I just don't want to beat them up anymore, let's speed it down.
So, yeah.
Yeah, we, we have this problem continually of people that have a 20 acre, 50 acre, 40 acre, and they didn't want to build on it. So, that's, and the way ordinances are, you, you, if you have one parcel, then you, they want to build on it, then that means you have, our ordinance requires you to improve the entire parcel, the entire road. They had 650 feet on their little subdivision, but they really only wanted to use five acres. So, we came up with a way that we get what we want as a town, which is improvements in front of people's houses, and, and then we get it in bites instead of one big chunk that nobody can afford. So, it's a little bit of a tricky way to go about it, but it's, it allows people to move forward.
It still adds up at the end, it's nothing that's, you know.
Yeah, it's, it's an improvement. Yeah, it's improved from what it was before, which was people built on, on nothing, you know, no street improvement, no, no drainage improvements, nothing. So, now we at least get whatever section they want to build on, improved.
I would like to bring up the fact that state law probably does not allow this, and I know that, or at least I'm told Sean is good with it, but I guess I'd really like to see Sean put something in writing about our subdivision ordinance and how it allows this when the state doesn't. I'm pretty, pretty convinced we're, we're getting on the wrong side of the state law.
It's, it's.
Frank, I, I know, I know I've talked.
We've had that discussion before.
We've had the discussion, it's, it's an agricultural property, so we're trying, we're changing to agriculture because then we can do.
We're changing it to OST, which is.
Which is agricultural property, it's.
No, totally, totally different, totally different.
Well, if it's open space, then one of our rules that say is that OST, OS, agriculture, those, anything that's, because we have.
We're, we're talking about two different things.
Well, we have thousands of acres of property out there that's OST, only thing that's on there is cattle. And that's what they're trying to address in that ordinance, is that these people have such large parcels, they can't divide that or sell it because you can't find anybody with deep enough pockets to buy it, that can't wear webs and.
My main concern is our subdivision ordinance would let them take that piece of property and divide it into 20 different parcels. That is a low way against state law.
But it would happen because they'd have to, they'd have to do.
They can't divide it into 20 parcels, they can divide it in three pieces is all, but not more than that.
What?
Well, they can come in and say it's a subdivision, and that's a whole different, that's not anything that the mayor can just sign and say, okay, everything's got to go before the planning commission.
So, you're gonna just be able to sign on a subdivision?
No, that's what I'm trying to say, is that I don't get the option of doing that at all. They have to go to planning commission for this, so.
This is minor lots splits that, that you can do, if it's more than three, then you've got to do a subdivision. But on minor lots splits, where you can't build on them, you can, the mayor or senior administrator can, can divide those lots off.
And it doesn't.
The way it's written in our current subdivision.
Yes, that was approved.
That was approved.
Yes.
Right, and I voted for it, and I learned a bad lesson, don't vote for something you haven't read. And after I read it, I realized the error of our ways. Say you had 60 acres, how many, how many?
Three.
You can still just do three lots out of 60 acres, where are you getting that?
How we wrote it.
It's in our ordinance.
Nope, it's not.
It's, it's how we, it's how we, I, we don't have the new one in here. Because, because that was one that was just passed, I don't know, like, maybe a month ago. So, the way it's worded is that it can only be split.
Uh, to make the difference, as water first was open for division, agricultural land and land located in an open space, open space transition. What it was exempt from, by departments, it never said anything about.
Specifically in what we changed. What I put down. Don't try to write a grade that says that somewhere.
It says three up here. That's, that's a different exemption.
The, the mayor can make this decision if it's not more than three, is what we put in the simple lots split. Minor subdivision.
You're saying the mayor can, okay, a subdivision.
No.
It's a lot split.
A lot split.
A lot split is by definition a subdivision.
Except for how we differentiate between.
If it's agricultural or if it's OST or if it's, that's all, I can't do, you can go in there into town and say, take a one acre parcel and divide it into three and, and apple out of property, I don't have that, can't do that. I can go out to John Page, he has 40 acres, I can't buy that. You know, those are, those are residential kind of areas, it's only in that OS and agricultural areas where they're talking about large parcels and, you know, that's one place that, that can be done.
We, we can put that, we can put that in our ordinance, but if you can't back that up by state law, then you, you're on the wrong side of the state law.
Well, obviously, this is something that we would have to look into and can't decide now, and it's what's on our ordinance right now anyway that was passed, so.
All I'm saying is, of course, you can come in here with a 60 acre open space and then do 20 lots, and there is, there's, there's two requirements here, that's all.
It does not say that.
Yeah, it does.
Well, that's what you have handwritten in, but we need to actually look and see what was actually.
No, no, I'm not talking about what I hand wrote. It says minimum size.
In the box is on top of the filing cabinet, in the tiniest slide, isn't it?
So, it's minimum size and then.
We can see what it actually says and what they asked versus our.
I'm telling you, this is.
I want to, I wanted to see what Alvin had handwritten, to see what the actual town counts loaded on. Okay, yes.
Just real quick, I mean, I'm looking at open space transition off our website right now and no residence, no residential buildings are allowed.
They're not going to build on it when it says OST, they're going to build on it after it says residential again.
Okay, I missed the whole workaround thing.
Evidently, so.
We're just trying to help somebody go with this.
And, well. I would suggest, so, recently, sometime ago, Bruce Hubert again, the, I feel for somebody that just wants to build their house. The city, so what we're talking about here is zoning change, if I understand correctly, zoning change has to be consistent with the general plan. And what the city has done in the past, we passed an ordinance that basically put a moratorium on subdividing till we got our act together. We don't have our act together in regards to the general plan, so how are we doing this very complicated zoning change thing when we don't even know what the general plan is?
I'm kind of thinking we're making it more complicated than it is. From what I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, it is a temporary zone change to OST, and then it'll be changed back to residential.
Right, but we just want to change back to the five acres only because we're trying to save these people about $50,000. It's a matter of, I get to build my house or I can't build my house, that's what the demands do there. If I had to change this to OST to help get out of the litigation that we're in, to help them build a house, to help them save $50,000, I'll just, I'll sell my soul to doing this zone change because it's the right thing for these people, they've been months trying to get this thing done, and I'm tired of having to block on stuff. They've been months trying to get this thing done, and I'm tired of having a block on stuff.
They're going to take us to court.
Well.
They already have.
They already have.
And it's not like they're, it's not like, we already did the, the zone change from plan development. It was officially zoned a plan development for an RV park originally.
Right, we're talking about ten acre parcels out there at least, that, um-
They didn't want to build an RV park, they just want to build a house. Yes.
When did it change to RV park?
Oh, it was before, and it was a plan development.
Many, many years ago.
Yeah.
Ten, twelve years ago.
Even your parcel is, is included in that. It's planned development, it was for-
A year ago, when I looked, I had them look here, it showed open transition.
Yeah, so we corrected all the maps, going through all the minutes of every meeting we've ever had.
It was under the timing, years and years ago, before Apple Valley became Apple Valley town.
No, it was, it was after, well, about a couple of years. Two thousand and six, I believe.
So my point remains the same, so we're doing this very complex work, where I feel for these people, doing this very complex work around, when it's all said and done, and we get the general plan straightened out, and the city's all under control, are we going to look back and go, whoa, that was another mistake we made by doing this complicated thing in conflict with the future vision of the city?
Different from the way I'm putting it, but you don't want to get on the wrong side of the state when you're dividing land. There's a big, big, big long section in there.
The fact that it was PD at one time, you look at that and go, whoa, that was a mistake.
Before our time.
Exactly. We don't want it to be on our plot, on our watch, that this type of thing happens.
I, I just would like to see us get some legal advice on what we did.
Well, Sean has said that this is fine legally.
He wants it done.
All right. He's our lawyer, so if he backs us up, then I feel comfortable.
I told him what we're, I told him what we're doing, and he just, he just wants the litigation to go away because, and he can see the way we're doing it, and he's in on that stuff. I don't, I just, um, you know, that's, that's where I'm at. I tried to get home all day to get him here, but I couldn't get a clock to let him get in.
Plus, we're all kind of busy.
Well, back, back to the point, we, we've got conflict with the general plan and what we're trying to do. So don't we have to entertain a change to the general plan also?
No, because what Sean also said is when you are downgrading a zone, and it doesn't necessarily have to-
The general plan, plan isn't going to come in, so let me just talk about this too, because this opens up for the-
For yours.
Is that, the, I, I talked to him about the general map plan, and he said that it, it does not go by parcel to parcel. The general map plan is not locked to any given, um-
Specific.
Parcel number. It is a bubble, and so if you can picture a bubble, he says, let me give you an example, and he used the station as the example. So in the station area, you have a commercial area, but you've got to picture this bubble. Now, let's say someone wanted to come in, and right next to that bubble is all residential property. And he says that that bubble, let's say someone came in and decided they wanted to build a restaurant next to the station that's really zoned residential. If it makes sense based on the proximity to the other commercial, that that bubble can extend over, and you can rezone that to commercial without even changing the general map, which might say residential. Because the bubble includes that, because it's right next to it. He says it's not parcel to parcel, it's, it's what's close by as well, can, if it can make sense based on this picture of a bubble around the property. And he says that St. George does it all the time, because it's, what's next to it is a bubble that can, you know, there's many cases where you say it was residential and now it's an attorney's office on, you know, a tavernac or something where it used to be all residential area, and that's where that bubble comes in to where that commercial bubble keeps expanding. And, look, if they're going right next to it, you know, he says, you don't need to change the map at all, the general map.
I have a question, why are we changing it to OTC instead of residential five? I'd be good.
They can't divide it that way, that's why, it is already residential five right now.
But why, I'm lost, why can't you divide it? What are you meaning by you can't divide?
Because we, we've been through this in a previous meeting, that they have to do six hundred and fifty feet of road improvements, take the electrical and all that down to six hundred and fifty feet. If we, if we just go OS, I can divide it into two pieces. We come back and rezone in just the piece they want to build on, not the whole piece, just the part they want to build on. And then they only have to improvements on the part of the property and stop right there. They don't have to do the whole six hundred and fifty feet, they only have to do three hundred. And it means I can build my house or I can't build my house. That's what I mean, so.
So, excuse me, so you're saying that we have these newly passed ordinances, and you're finding a way to violate the ordinance that we just got to pass?
No.
By changing it to a different zone and then changing it back again?
The new ordinance actually is what allows this, we made the new changes that allows this to-
The new ordinance allows it.
Well, then why aren't we just doing it directly? Why can't you do it just straight back?
That's what we're trying to do.
You're going to, you're going from, it's already RE five, we're going to OST, so you can go, I'm not following you.
What we had was a wrong zoning on that anyways, a plan development, and we had to change it. And so we brought these people in, we wouldn't let them do the lots split on it, and, but we changed the zone to RE five for these people on this, on this land. And so we charged them money to do that, to do what they didn't want to do. And so they go to their attorney and say, this is just a bunch of crap. And they, they started a lawsuit on it because this is not right, that we can't just divide our property without having all these road improvements, all this expense. And so meanwhile, in the midst of all this, we happened to pass another ordinance we've been working on for months, has nothing to do with them. And we passed this ordinance that allows us to take a large parcel of land and divide it just into two pieces, for example. And so to do that, it has to be OS, it has to be, it has to be even probably what this used to be, but it's, it has to be, so we changed this, hampered the, the whole process for these people. Well, I'm just trying to change it back, let's make it OS, I can divide the property now. Now they can just zone only what they want to build on, they can sell the other property as OS. I'm just trying to fix the problem that we've got to.
Any other questions or comments on this zone change? All right, so I-
I think, I think, that your consensus is on change.
We need to close the hearing, we need to close the hearing.
Oh, sorry. Make motions for close the hearing.
On the zone change from AB thirteen seventy seven? Okay, vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Three carries? All right, so, now we get to take action on it, discuss it.
Yes, I'd like to approve the zone change and send it off to the city council on residential zone five acres to open space transitional. AB nine three seven seven C, send it out to the town council and our attorney.
I second?
Aye.
This vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Is that me? All right, so, carries? All right. The next item on the agenda is a hearing to, for the proposed changes to Title X, Chapter twenty six, Section ten, don't think, no, no, Title X, Chapter ten B, Sections two and three. It was basically allowing to have, um, like a little store or gift shop or whatever in the recreational vehicle park zone. Instead of just all RVs, it allows them to have like a little, a little shop or something too, in addition to that.
Drops.
Yes. Maybe a little restaurant, or just something that fits within the parameters of the-
Cynthia, was that under E on that tender, tell me, Dester?
Yeah, is this the, the new revised, or?
No. This is the one that's, that's accepted, yeah, this is not revised. So we're wanting to add that to the permitted uses.
It's what's currently on file.
Yes, that's just on file right now.
Right, so whatever changes you make, we need to document, so we can be official about it.
So we're wanting to add wording, um, permitted uses to allow, you know, a little, little store or gift shop or whatever.
How does that worded, minor, minor detail?
I don't know if I can pull it up. You sent a, an email out that had some verbiage.
Yeah, I thought, you had that?
Well, I-
It was, uh-
On my, on my phone.
Supporting, um, business, um, if, we were just wanting to say allowable, um, permitted uses to say supporting businesses that are appropriate to the RV industry. So you might have a bike shop, you might have, you know, a laundromat, a curio shop.
Do we limit this number of square feet for such things, so we don't wind up with like a camping world?
Everything is subject to our approval of the plan of the issue anyway, so it doesn't-
Frank, can I comment?
Yeah, I just want to make, Mia knows this, but I want everybody else knows.
Well, yeah, this is, yeah, we were just talking about what we're doing, I guess we should start the hearing now. So, so yes, we'll do that before we go any further. So I move that we open the hearing to discuss changes to permitted uses for Title X, Chapter ten B, Sections two and three, recreational vehicle park zone.
Second.
Second, vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, now.
We, we've had this discussion, you know, many times before, and we also wanted to merge, take the, basically create a recreational zone where you could do, you could do RVs, you could do cabins, you could do tents, you could do stores that are pertaining to that. And we found that ordinance from Virgin, and we already went through it on the planning commission.
Well, we, we filled out a little survey, we had a little discussion about survey.
So that, that, that zone is now ready to go in front of the planning commission, and it's much broader and much more friendly to the developer than the one we have presently. And so I would think that that's probably common.
Couple of things I like about this new one as well is that it allows for those gravelled roads as opposed to everything empty blocked up. It also allows for, you know, a tent area next to the cabin, that kind of thing. So you have that flexibility where you can have families and set up a pup tent next to the cabin, you know, that kind of thing. There's just, there's a little more flexibility in there.
Facing is another one, that the, the cabin ordinance required fence all the way around. And we took all those out, and then, and we submitted that, and I was ready to go. So if I was a developer, I would much rather be developing under that one than, than a quick pack.
Did we ever answer the question, because the one thing we weren't able to finalize with that survey was setback for fire access. That was one thing we had to put off because we were going to look into that further.
Yeah, we, we talked to chief about that, whatever he wanted, and we put that in, in that proposed ordinance. So Boris and I worked on it for a long time, and it was just recently that we sent it to the mayor to, to, to get his opinion and then send it forward to the planning commission.
Well, being that we would have to still look at it as the planning commission and have a hearing for it to approve it, and then it would have to go to the town council to approve it further, which we can do.
Sure.
I, I still think that in order to cover anyone who might be wanting to do something more right now, there's no harm in adding permitted uses on this old one, but it's not that old, because we fixed this one just back in May. It's not that old, um, that we can add it to this, and then we can still start the process of, of doing the ordinance.
But they're not prohibited from doing, like, right now, they could just come in and say, I want thirty acres.
But it just, it fixes it two to three weeks ahead.
No, it doesn't fix. What I'm saying is, if they came in today and wanted to, all they have to do is say, thirty of my acres is, is cabins, and this five acres in the front I want to do as commercial, and then whoa, they have the same thing. If, you know, that's still the question.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with putting, putting forth this, this new recreational zone that kind of, you know, combines everything. I have no problem with that because we discussed a lot of it. I'm just saying, there's no reason why we can't add this bit to the permitted zone in this current one, and then we can continue on with, with changing it. It, it makes it so it's okay now, and, and so we can overhaul the whole thing again.
Why do we need to make it okay now?
It, it doesn't matter.
I'm just wondering the urgency, I don't understand urgency.
We have nothing on the table that's going to help.
Okay, well then, fine. Then, but what, we won't be able to approve it until we have a meeting about it and look through it, because we haven't seen, we haven't seen it, we've only seen a survey.
That's no problem, that won't hurt us on anything we have on the table.
Okay.
You and I were just trying to fix the problem when we had the conversation, he gave me, I think, a better solution. I just, you know, so.
Bring something forward, let's table this.
Well, yeah, we might not even need to-
Put it on the agenda then, yeah.
Does that move it forward?
Where does this exist right now? Isn't that something you have, Frank?
Well, this is one you and I worked on.
Right, I don't know who, where it is.
I, I gave it to Cynthia, so she has it, we can get it from her and, but, uh-
Yeah.
I didn't know, in my head.
You just sent it as an attachment?
Yeah, yeah, but I, I can resend it.
Yeah, maybe do that.
If not, I have it, you can just-
Because, yeah, we would definitely have to look at it and discuss it, and then have a hearing and do all that.
And I'm sure it needs to be tweaked, but it's, it's really good, where everything is in the one.
Well, so we'll have to have a meeting to tweak anything.
Well, that would be a good item to have in a work meeting with the land use plan, because we don't, we don't currently have anything along the general plan that covers this.
Okay. So, all right.
So, and we have something we've already approved, and it's already, uh, it's at the council. And they want to do this, I think we should be allowed to do it.
So if we have no one chomping at the bit for this right now, then that's fine.
No, you died, just had a conversation.
Okay, yeah, I, I thought that, I thought we were trying to allow something.
It was just a hole I saw in it.
Okay.
Move it to table item number two.
And, and, and schedule a work meeting with the new recreational combo zone.
Thank you.
Anytime.
Will the motion?
Yes.
A second.
Okay, vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And we have to close the hearing. A little cart before the horse, but that's all. So additionally-
I move that we close the hearing before we move to that.
Second.
Vote?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
Nothing happened.
That's right.
I propose we do the table three also. Another work meeting.
All, all that is, is saying we'd like setbacks to do seventy-five feet instead of fifty.
Okay.
So that was the only thing I was thinking for that.
Seventy-five feet.
All right. But we'll have to do a hearing for it and see what we want to do. All right, so item number three, proposed changes to Title X, Chapter twenty six, Section ten, building setbacks and additional design standards. The only thing we were talking about with this is that currently, someone builds up on a butte or a cliff or whatever, the setback is fifty feet, and we'd like to make that to like seventy-five feet.
Agreed.
And so that's what the hearing is about, so I motion that we open the hearing for proposed changes to Title X, Chapter twenty six, Section ten, building setbacks and additional design standards. Vote?
Aye.
Aye? All right, so, ideas about that? You want to have any questions or concerns about setbacks? Yes, ring building.
Okay.
Seventy-five feet back instead of fifty?
Yes, agree.
Going once?
Fifty feet feels like you're still on the cliff, you know, like you can just jump off, it's-
It's closer than anything, yeah.
Public comment, aye? Nobody say?
So, um, in other communities that have, uh, some mason tops, you know, surrounding their communities, they have view shed regulations, so, uh, new construction needs to be setback so that it doesn't spoil the view. I like that. I like that regulation. I like that approach. It's not a specific number. It's, it's relative to the height of the home and on where it's going to be placed on the lot. And, and what the view angles are generally from the road is where they, they measure that. I'm just throwing that out there just for consideration, that's all.
I don't know. This doesn't have too much passion involved with it, so.
Well, the, the one right underneath that talks about a hundred feet, uh, under some circumstances, so maybe that's kind of what you're saying in a different way.
Yeah, that it might apply in some view situations or whatever. But they were wanting to make the minimum of seventy-five instead of fifty.
Right, right. But in some cases it could be a hundred. Can you see that white right underneath? Oh, well. So it could be more than seventy-five, it's more than seventy.
We want to make it so it can't be less.
Right.
Any others?
I think seventy-five is a lot better than what we have right here, which is nothing.
Well, it's fifty, but, but yeah.
It'd better be a lot of people.
Okay, so then.
I'm, I'm moving to close the hearing on Chapter twenty-six, inside development.
Okay, last few comments.
Real quick, like, Rich Osskey, in twenty-four, uh, the seventy-five feet seems fine. Depending on the structure, but that'll come later when you approve something. But on that seventy-five feet, they won't be able to cut any trees down. They won't be able to move any rocks. They won't be able to destroy anything within that seventy-five feet, right?
Does it say that?
No.
Say that, no.
Because they come in and you hear a lot of people, and I've been in areas where they decide to top a tree or they, and they've done it before at nighttime. And, and communities that have HOAs and they never got caught. So I don't want them coming in and topping a lot of trees to get their view.
Why, I mean, I think we can specify setback, but I don't know when you tell people what not to do.
Yeah, well, in common areas like along sidewalks where they cut the view down for the golf course or city lights, uh, it would be the same thing in this particular situation. You can chop down a little trees to get your view, but I don't think that would help. That seventy-five feet don't mean anything yet.
Okay, noted, yes.
If I don't know that we legislate that though, I mean, that's a problem.
Also, Washington County's tried to legislate not cutting cedar, chopping cedar trees.
I can't hear you back here.
Huh?
We're just saying we don't think we can legislate that. It's private property. First of all, it's a cut tree down. It's their tree. I, I support not cutting down trees, but I just don't think that we can.
I make a motion that we bring up, uh, for the change of course, proposed changes to Title X, Chapter six, twenty-six, Section ten, building setbacks and additional design standards.
Second, vote.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay. Item four. Oh wait, no, no, sorry.
We gotta, we gotta vote.
So.
We gotta send this off to.
Yeah, we have to. All right, so I move that we, um, approve or send this on to the planning, to the town council with, um, recommendation to approve the changes of setting the, resetting the setback from fifty feet to seventy-five.
Second.
Vote.
Aye.
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 All right. All right, number four, another hearing. All right, so this is a hearing for, um, zone change from planned development zone to agricultural zone for AV thirteen seventy-seven N. Anthony Shapley is here. So yes, I move that we open the hearing for this zone change from PD to ag zone for AV thirteen seventy-seven N. Second? Vote.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so.
What you gonna do, Rick?
Yeah, go ahead, tell us what you, it's a hearing, so. What are you wanting?
I'm wanting the agricultural zone because I want to build a barn and have some animals on it. And right now I can build a home and I can't build a home on planned development. I've been about a year working on this. And put out a lot of money to put in the water line extension and those things. And we're just anxious to get going on our home.
So again, it comes back to, um, kind of downgrading from planned development to agricultural zone.
He says it's downgrade. And, uh, so to him, an upgrade would be, uh, you know, going back to residential at some point. And he didn't feel, I don't want to say he didn't feel, he says you don't need to change the general map when you're doing downgrade like that because of, also because the bubble is wrapped it. That's what his, his, uh.
Confirmation.
What is the, uh? Which lot is yours? Which one are we talking about?
So the general plan is commercial, just, just inject the.
No, I think it's not. Isn't that half acre?
Depends on where you live. It's, it's all messed up.
Yeah, he can build a home on agricultural.
No, the general plan is commercial.
When I looked on, I was online, it was medium density residential, which is all of the area around there.
So. That's what it says right there.
And it's officially zoned in PD though.
No, the zone is different.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's zoned in PD, but I'm really sure the general plan is commercial to go with.
But again, taking something from commercial to.
But if you guys are okay with that, I'm not gonna argue.
Yeah, and, and Sean was okay with it too.
The business over here.
When I purchased the property, your maps here showed open transition and at the state level. Even though the general plan showed commercial.
And it got changed to PD.
And then it changed to PD while we were working through this process.
I think the panelists still showed them open space too, don't they?
Yeah, so.
PD is, thought it built a barn, built a house.
Well, if, if they're saying it doesn't matter, I'm not gonna worry.
Hold over six.
Six point three acres. Six point three, three acres.
I, uh, I want to point out a few things for you, if you'd like. You know, first of all, if you change this to, to agricultural, it would be like a leap of agriculture amongst all the other stuff. It, on the general plan over there and on the one that have been discussed right now, it's all residential, designed for residential. It looks like it's going to be residential. They just put in a small subdivision there that is residential. They heat a butch too.
Yes.
So to put agricultural right next to somebody's house, because the issue isn't that he has a cow. The issue, or a pig, or whatever it is, well, a pig is an issue. But, uh, the issue is that in a agricultural zone, he can come in and add, put in a big old steel building in there. And if you were the guy that lived, uh, John, uh, the Humphreys live right there in that little house, then most have already gave him a giant steel building on the other side in their neighborhood and one downstream. And now he will, will be allowed by changing it to agricultural to put a big steel building in there. And from everything I see, it's all residential, it's going to be residential. So it would be highly inappropriate for us to change the zone to agricultural, one little spot, when everything else will be residential. And especially considering that the impact a big steel building will have on somebody else's property right next to it.
Frank, I, I, I got two big steel buildings on my lot. They're, they're bonds. And they're, they're on Big Lake.
But there's no reason, he, he could come in and, and, and do residential estates and he can have a, a little barn and he can have his horse and he can have whatever on residential estate. They'll fit right in with the, with the intent. But the only thing that's difference between residential estates and agricultural is the big steel buildings. So I, I will be very uncomfortable with saying, I think it's wrong to allow big steel buildings there. And if you're just talking about a barn for your horses or something, you know, residential estates is the appropriate zone for, for that. And that'll allow the animals, that'll allow the barn, but it won't allow the big steel buildings.
Anthony, is this what you're thinking of, is just a barn for horses and?
I don't have any intention of a big steel building.
Well, it would, it would allow you if we change the zone, the guy goes, oh.
Yeah, I think, I think the zone would be inconsistent with the rest of the.
But RE estates limit you to how many chickens and how many cats, you know what I mean?
Well, it's a residential area. This is not the L. West.
Well, everything east, okay, everything east of that road is open transition. And it's going to change to agriculture is what they want.
Well, it's, the general plan is, has it lined out for residential, like Frank said.
But this general plan shows commercial, so I could put a steel building there. You know, I know, I'm just saying.
But that's with us, the one that's.
Change it to something, wow, that PD doesn't allow that.
Well, when I purchased it, your update, maps weren't updated and it had nothing to do with PD.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, but that's.
I'd be comfortable going as far as, uh, 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 estate, residential estate.
Is that like RE five and a five or what?
Yeah, it allows for a barn and, uh, you know.
accessory buildings.
It can only be fifty percent of the footprint.
I thought it was sixty.
Sixty percent.
Yeah, yeah, it does limit you on the size of the building.
Marty's the one that suggested the agricultural.
Yeah, I don't think that's consistent with, with the neighbors, you know. You know, just because you don't have intentions now to put up a steel building or put fifty head of cattle on there doesn't mean you might change it.
Are any of the neighbors here to dispute it?
It's not a workup.
Well, I heard if the neighbors didn't like it, they would come to the meeting and say they didn't like it.
Unfortunately, most neighbors, uh, don't know of what's going on here in, in, in town. So, um, and in order to be a zone change, did, did we, I'm just asking a question. Did we send out the notices to everybody so that it's? But irregardless, it's still a spot zone guilty. One of them five acres in the middle of all the others would be residential.
But, but isn't that what Marty is arguing is okay? If, if we're doing that for holes?
No, no, that's a different issue. That's a entirely different issue because holes will be residential, but blend in with all the rest of it.
Will be, but it's not.
But it's just going to open space, so it, it's not, it doesn't allow them to build a house. It doesn't allow them to do anything.
Open space allows you to put animals on it.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, but you can't build any structures. So it doesn't open the door for, for holes to do anything that, that is contrary to residential estates. But if I do agricultural, it will be, it opens the door for stuff that is incompatible with residential.
I, I agree, that's true, but it seems may like more.
So just, I would suggest residential estate would be fitting with, with the intent of all the rest of it.
Does that mean I gotta wait another two weeks and go to another hearing and to change it to residential estate?
We can do that now. Can we do that? Can we do that?
We, we can, um, forward it to the town council with the provision that instead of agriculture, that it's residential estates.
Well, yeah, I don't know that it's going to, it's going to everything he wants to do. I'm sorry, Ms. Carly, we didn't have a phone call that day, but, um, so.
Well, he said that you recommended human agriculture.
I recommend that because I know he wants to build a barn, he wants to have animals. And everything that's around it, that's close to it, I mean, he has, he has OS property right next to the highway. He's on the highway.
Well, but he's also got small lot neighbors right across the street.
Well, Marty, you guys' lot is, is agriculture in the middle of residential, isn't it?
Well, I, I, you know, we're on eight and a half acres. He's got six point three, three. I think he probably owns five or something behind it on here.
No, that's not. No, it's not. We did the zone change for him, just what, like two years ago?
Two years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah, okay, I misspoke. It's on general plans, commercials, how's that?
I'm also looking at the twenty to the highway side. And it's not going to be residential.
I just think that's the appropriate place for somebody's building is right on the highway compared to in the middle of, you know, being the neighbor of, you know, the holes or something, you know. And we got already too many of those up in that Bubba and Rose area. It was just massive buildings. But I don't know, what, what else do you want on ten acres but a big building to have your horses or whatever on it?
Well, there's.
Well, it's, it's six acres and, and what, I think what, I think what we agree on maybe is we want to have some transitional zones that go from residential to agriculture where you're not putting people's houses right up against agricultural property. I think that's a big concern.
If that little subdivision wasn't already there, then it would be commercial next to it and Marty's point is, you know, whoever. But it is there and it is one acre lots, little homes. And I think we have an obligation as, as a town to protect people's values. And, and we do that by zone things appropriately that's, that's compatible with what's next here.
Those homes you're talking about have commercial next to them on the other side.
On the other side, right.
So now it'd be sandwiched in.
It'll be sandwiched in, could be sandwiched in, depending on what he builds, of course, but.
Well, they're not sandwiched in because he's right on the highway. His property prints right next to the highway, but.
Yeah, but they're right across the, the same side of the street.
Yeah.
They're home, 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 home. There's four homes in that little cul-de-sac. And then there's his parcel.
There's three homes.
Well, it's four, four lots.
Four lots, four lots. So it, it's not very compatible with that. But the question we ask is, you know, can you, can you do it now? I don't know. I mean, that's a technical, whether it was advertised a certain way and then you can change it, but it maybe it's in time for the town council, you can. I don't know. I'm, I'm not a, I'm not an expert on, on, on meeting law.
And nor are we.
Is this gonna do what you want to do for your house?
Well, the question would be if I'm gonna go residential, can I just split it into three lots then? It's not gonna do me any good if it's.
Three lots would be compatible with what they did on the other side of the same cul-de-sac, around.
And it could be, so it would be agricultural estate in three or just one?
No, it'll be residential, residential estates.
Rural.
Rural estates, yeah. If you take the rural estates, then that allows you to have animals, certain animals. And then, yes, you can come in and ask for a subdivision divided into, well, in fact, you're already on a, on a dedicated street. So you should be able to just do the quick way of dividing it.
Not really.
Well, you still have to put improvement.
It's not, um, it's not, um, a one street agricultural property, PD, I think.
Oh, yeah, that's true. So you still have to do the, the two-step process.
Yeah.
But, but the answer is, yes, yes, you could divide if the council will, will agree with you to. But you have six acres, but you do have a street, that proposed street that goes straight through that gives your neighbors access to the highway.
It's not a street right now.
I know.
Prescribed easement, by the way.
It's prescribed easement and is also on the master plan of the town. So it's one you can't ignore. Because the, the parcels behind you have, they will have no access. If you block that off, then they, they can't get anywhere. Because they, you, you got, will not allow everybody that's on the highway to get their whole driveway into it. The city is, uh, town is mandated to minimize those accesses on and off the highways.
They have access on two thousand, up to two thousand.
No, they can't because of that big washes there. They have to build a million dollar bridge to get across it. So there, there's no, and that's why that little parcel, that.
In order for the LeBarons to improve their road, they, that's two thousand.
No, the Barons' property is divided by a huge wash. It's like, uh, ten foot deep and forty foot wide. And so that's why you can't come from your side up to two thousand, just because of that washes there. So if, when we did that.
Up to two thousand to go through, all they need is a cover.
It was a giant wash. It was a giant wash, so it would have to, but what you're suggesting is that it, it just, they- they gain access through somebody else's property. But that- that road right there is already there, so-
They both learn that rage when it comes.
Right, and it's already has huge covers and it handles all the water right now. But, no, you can subdivide it. I'll- I'll be surprised if this town would say, no, you can't subdivide it because they just did it across the street from you. That's what Miller did. He- he took his piece and divided it on that side, so I don't see why you shouldn't be able to do it on the other side.
But can you get three lots if you, if we're running a collector road through there?
Well, then, if that collector road, well, then, no, because then that would be a road, then that means you just have to appropriate frontage on- on that, so you'll have, you'll have frontage on two streets, so you can easily do three lots.
It's not so easy.
Well, if- if the planning commission say yes, then the council-
But it's not as easy as just us saying yes, either. It's been found with the whole LeBaron issue.
No, yeah, you still have to approve it. You have to approve it.
And there's no one here that's, that's adjacent to the property that can say anything about it?
Do these property owners adjacent, get notified, is anyone?
Yes, for the third time, right?
Okay, why they were?
Talking with them, none of them had a problem with the agricultural.
What do you plan on having there, it sounds scary.
It's not. A few sheep and a few cows, I mean, it's not like a full-fledged farmyard, but- Agriculture's a cheaper zone.
I think too that it says a lot when you have no one here arguing on the, uh, against it.
And the property to the east, they're gonna rezone, they want to zone to agricultural? So it's-
Property to the east?
Behind them.
The rest of the, if people have issue with it.
But it's, it's not what they wanna use it, it's what the general plan will show that matters.
Well, I don't think the residents want a planned building here.
No, no, no doubt, that's gotta go away because it's RE part.
It does have to go away.
No question.
And it should be, um, an estate, rural estate, and you can't have those kind of animals on that property because you-
I'm fine with, I don't know if you call it ag estate or rural estate or five acre.
Rural estate is basically the same thing.
I think that makes more sense than-
The rural estate has a lot of limits on what you can do before you operate, and so that's the difference.
Right, and that's why-
And that's why I was suggesting that, 'cause I, I know that you're trying to do-
I'm not trying to build a steel building.
No, I, we never, well, we didn't say we're-
Because certain people have a problem with that.
Do you think it would be wise for you to take a couple of weeks and read the rural estates and make sure that-
I read through them, I didn't really like them. I've been working on this for a long time.
Really?
So as far as we know, the neighbors aren't objecting. It's at the far end of town, right off the highway, pretty much. Six plus eight acres.
So, um, what is the general plan show right now? Could we, we need to make sure it's consistent.
And again, we've gotten the okay.
We're- we're fuzzy on that, what it shows.
It is a little fuzzy on that map, but if you put, get it on the computer, you can tell it's commercial.
It says, the whole intersection there says commercial. Every one of those homes says commercial on general map. But I don't know if that's updated because this is, we're talking about a map that's, you know, two years ago.
And again, what Sean was saying is that the general plan is not something that's set in stone, particular to a specific lot.
I explained him, I explained the layout and showed him this stuff, and he didn't have a problem with it. I said that that's, uh, that it does not have to have a general map change, it's within the bubble of what's next.
Marty, what is yours?
Sorry?
What is yours?
Your?
Agricultural.
It's agricultural.
Right there, and Angels is also agricultural. I also, I wish you would be on the text.
Well, we're right next to one X lots.
Yeah, you are.
Let me suggest that a mistake is not a precedent for making new mistakes. So, just because something is, I mean, you're looking to an example, that's fine, but if it's a mistake, it's not precedent to do another mistake.
Exactly, but I feel good about our decision with your lot because it's fitting to what you were getting at.
And it's a denser populated area.
Yes.
I did want it on the record that, I mean, I don't agree with- with what the mayor's saying that- that Sean said. Any parcel that you need a zone change on, and if the, if the general plan doesn't match what's on that parcel, you have to change the general plan first. I've been doing this forever and ever and ever, and he's right, if there, if it's a bubble that- that touches, that is questionable, is the one or the other, absolutely, there's some- some leverage. But if it's not that, then it is, if it's clearly residential estate, so I'd say, uh, say, uh, low density on the general plan, residential, and you wanna change it to agricultural, then you have to do a general plan that change first, and then a zone change.
To me, to me, there's no reason to have a general plan if you don't make an attempt to follow it.
Well, I agree.
I'd just like to, uh, get my regard, like, Sean's been the attorney for St. George for what, twenty-five or thirty years, he does a dead acre, living as well, and deals with these issues, and I'm just telling you what he gave me is that it's a bubble, it's not, uh, in iron plaid, in stone, that it doesn't follow lot by lot.
We get to use common sense and flow of the town with our judgments.
If it's-
But I agree with, I agree with Frank that, you know, that at some point, some of these maps have to be changed, we can't just not change them, but if it's a buts, something else that's not included in it.
That's what we're here, we're working.
And some of that stuff to the east, that's just quite open space out there, but if you have one, have a general map change, we can do a general map change, if it's not, you know, I didn't put it in there because Sean said it, I feel like we had to have it all, so.
But I'm not, I'm just saying what my understanding is, and whether you wanna follow it or not, and that's entirely up to you, but-
Only what else says it's okay?
Yes, and I, I like the legal counsel.
Are you here to legal counsel? And what we've done in the past has not been that long ago and has all ordinances, so I think we can go with, um, agriculture.
We do need to make sure we don't have any more comments that you can add. So, are there any more questions, comments, concerns about this? Is everyone who's wanting to get on the record?
Well, I just have a comment, Anne Knight, Romey, but if- if the rural does fit your needs, then why are you pushing for agriculture? See, I don't, I don't understand that. If the rural estate fits the needs of what you wanna build and what you want to accomplish, well, what, what is, in what way does it?
I mean, I haven't, I didn't memorize all the things in the help.
It allows you to have a home, it allows you to have the barn and the animals, is that what you're trying to accomplish?
What I mean is, the restrictions are more on a lot of the little things.
Yes, such as?
Such as the barn size, the accessory building size and height, and number of animals you're gonna have.
But those are the things that are directly in conflict with the residential one acre right next to it. So, that's why that you shouldn't have an ag right next to it. In fact, in the ag zones, it specifically says you can't have animals within an extra amount of feet of another property to put, so it doesn't make sense to put, uh, to allow, but I'm not concerned about the animal, I'm concerned about the size of the building. Because if you build a big old monster building, which you can, if you make an ag, then you're destroying the neighbors' values, even though they may not be here, it's just because they don't understand, uh, what, how this works. But it doesn't mean that we as a town shouldn't protect their interest over, uh, you know, people that are here-
We should be protecting all of our interests.
But people that are here, we already got our properties and it's a town's obligation to protect our values, uh, uh, as much, you know, when somebody wants to- to do something different, but if it's detrimental, if it destroys the value or lowers the values of the neighbor's property, I don't think we should vote for it, or could lower the value.
We have talked many times about creating, you know, the- the layered effect, uh, and having transition from one area to- to the appropriate next area, to the appropriate next area.
Right.
And I support that.
Yes, please. Um, do you have any commercial intent as far as the animals are concerned? That seems to be a big difference between agriculture and rural estates. Rural estates rules out, um, commercial animals, like cattle that you're gonna sell and-
You'd probably have some cattle.
Well, yeah, and ag, I mean, you have cattle, they reproduce and-
There- there's a formula, if you can have X number of large animals and meat in it, it's fine.
And then, uh, the residential states doesn't fit that, but I also own the five acres behind it to the east. And it's, that's where most of it will be, but I wanted, wanted to combine it.
Which, which lot is that?
Yeah, what is this now?
It's just directly to the east of the six acre piece. Am.
Yeah, that's your east.
That's yours on some of the side.
It's not in my name right now.
It has a, has an AB, AB something as owner.
He said the East.
AB Lamb.
AB Lamb, is that you?
It's not me.
So, then you don't own it.
It hasn't switched over.
He's under an ag. Is what you're saying, or did you already contract?
No, I already paid for it.
Oh, okay. Is there anybody say something?
So what I'm saying is, it's going to transition towards ag all the way back.
So, I'd like to, um, use my house as an example of, you know, having a large parcel, a large house, a large lot, in the middle of the neighborhood, and I get zero complaints in neighbors.
Come and build your house in my neighborhood, and nobody will come right here.
I wonder why. I mean, you got a gorgeous place.
Is there, uh, so let's say you decided to build a ten thousand foot steel warehouse on your property.
It's not a warehouse, I didn't build a warehouse.
Let's say you just, let's say you sell the property, new owner moves in, and the new owner goes, I'm gonna put in a ten thousand square foot steel warehouse.
I have a steel building.
What ordinances stop that from happening?
Well, I s- I have a steel building and it's six thousand square feet, so I've already had, in that example, but when you drive by there, I haven't had anybody playing other than, holy cow, that's awesome. You know, that's what the neighbors say because it's, it's landscaped, it's well done, it's appointed, it had, we have horses, it's, it just, you know, it feels right, and it's in a one acre neighborhood.
I'm one of his neighbors, and I like the property.
Yeah, but I don't think your intent was, was the same. Your intent is not the same as this one.
We don't know that.
The whole record is acres and acres and acres of- of, of open space and-
Same with the Angels or another neighbors.
But this is a glee in the middle of- of residential, uh, so-
And empty lots to the east of it.
It's not a, it's a glee on the edge of the residential.
No, I get, but you have, you have somebody there that has a few little house, this is their, this is their lifetime investment, that if you put a big old steel building next to it, then you're gonna lower their values, and it's gonna be hard for them to sell their property. And that's why I don't understand, if you're saying you're not gonna do that, just go residential estate and then it won't happen, you can't do it.
I know you have an issue with steel buildings.
I certainly do. When you put them next to residential homes, I absolutely do.
Marty's barn is a steel building. It doesn't have to look bad, and it will, I promise you, I'm not gonna decrease anybody's value.
I know whose person has a huge steel building out there.
Yes, well, we have a steel building in our area and it has, it looks bad and it brought-
And we hate it.
And it brought our, our property values down.
The warehouse.
I agree with you.
So, I- I'm gonna have to agree with Frank on this, that, you know, when you, when you build one of those steel buildings, I don't care if it's a barn or what, I don't, barn is okay, but when it becomes a residential with a, with a big old garage next to it, that could be a warehouse, or, or, you know, a lot of people sneak and build, they- they do businesses out of these, these steel things. I don't agree with it, and it, it makes the residential area look bad.
Well, I think that place out there does look bad, I have to agree.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we can. Joe John has intent.
We can, but we, but we can't decide what the town, residential.
I don't need it for commercial, I have a commercial lot.
He doesn't need it for commercial. Yes, in the back, yes.
Pam Quayle, Smithsonian Row. Um, two things, number one, I don't think it really matters exactly what he's gonna do, we need to worry about if he's gonna sell it too, because this goes on to the next person. And the second thing is, does the agriculture limit the number of animals you can have for acre? Because is there gonna be a feed, I mean, he's not gonna build a feed lot, but what if the next guy does? I wouldn't wanna feed lot next to my house.
Uh, chapter seventy?
Yes. I'm seeing if there are.
You have the lots to the east. Why don't you do with thirteen seventy-seven of rural estate and one of the other two would be your agricultural?
I will if they allow that when I get ready to do that.
So what, the idea is to create an orderly buffer zone between smaller lots and agricultural land, so what you don't want is you don't wanna have, you know, fifty cows at your fence line, or across the street, or a feed lot, or, you know, I mean, these people's concerns are very valid, so.
So, just one question. If the LeBarons are gonna go to open transition so that Marty can sign a lot split, does it make sense for me to go to agricultural so he can sign a lot split and I go to residential from there?
Well, we do open space transitional to the agricultural.
Or is there a bigger process once I'm rural estate if I wanna split it into two more lots?
Yeah, there is a process.
There was a subdivision order.
Yeah, a simple lot split is up to, is it up to three?
Four, and, and up in four.
A simple is?
So I thought it, I thought it was a total of three.
Four.
Up to three.
You can split it off three lots, make a total.
No, create a total of three.
No, let's do that.
I mean, I have a comment on, nobody's buying the property at the values we're paying for property out here to turn it into ag. It- it's way too pricey. They're all gonna be homes, big homes, large homes, small homes, whatever, they're gonna be homes someday, and it may be a five acre, two acre, whatever, but they're gonna be homes, because you're not gonna pay ten thousand or five thousand an acre to turn it into ag. And if you look at, on the, in the state law that defines what ag is, it, he wouldn't remotely qualify. It's not the intent of, of an ag home.
But, but there is a little bit of a difference there, but the ag zone from the town's viewpoint doesn't necessarily have a lot to do with state agricultural land.
No.
We can have some difference.
Yeah, no, I get it, I get it.
Off-farm comes up, and that's, that's kinda what it's there for, it doesn't have to be all around animals, it can just be, um, growing.
But he can do all that under his residential estates, so that's why, the only thing you can't do is, is the great big buildings, that's detrimental to your neighbor, and you can't do the great big feed lot, do that stuff that you could on ag, or bigger ag, and so, that's why, why go there when you can accomplish what you want with, with a residential estate?
I agree. So, what do we?
Well, that's why we went ag on our property, is we, one of the larger problems is we have horses, and we want, it takes so much room inside there to, uh, house them and feed and attack, we want to be able to lock them in, in lightning storms to protect them.
And ride them in the rain.
Ride them in the rain from one to inside, and, and that's why we have the size requirement that we do, is trying to, um-
But, but you could've done that with residential estate as well.
No.
No.
That's, that's the problem, that's why we went ag on it, because there's a limit on how big in relation to the square foot, footprint of your house, which even on my house was a problem to create, I could only go like four thousand feet or something.
Well, I, I get that, but, but, but what was your name?
Anthony.
Pam?
Anthony.
Anthony.
No, no, the, the-
Pam Quayle.
Pam. Pam's point was very well- Pam's point was very well taken, I mean, if it's zone agriculture, there's nothing that says it can't be a feedlot someday. If he sells it, or whatever, or if he just decides he doesn't like it, because we didn't.
Leave out anything besides that.
Yeah, I mean, there needs to be an orderly transition from residential to agriculture that protects the interests of people who own property there, they might afford. And I think we'll see a lot of nodding heads up.
I think it would be a different story if he'd come in and said, "Here is my, I wanna zone change, here's my house, and here's the building I wanna build, and, and, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm 100% committed to it." But like you said, he could sell it, and the next thing you know, it'll be something entirely different.
Yeah, 'cause it's zone...
'Cause zoning gives you rights.
Right.
Those are granted periods, we can't take it away, we can't say, "Oh, he said this, oops, we didn't intend that."
So, we're only talking about this lot right here, right?
Yes.
All right, but, but eventually you're gonna have one further on?
AB one three seven seven ten.
I'm okay with the rural, I guess, if that's what I have to say, I just need to get going on the house.
Want to start building your house?
I, I think rural estate would be the best, and then you could probably do agricultural.
I'm just, I'm wanting to figure out...
Marty, weren't you zoned agricultural already before you built?
No, no, actually it was OST property, and then we built, and then we, we thought we actually, we wanted to lot, since it was a, you know, lot eight was a big lot. And it didn't, I didn't do something like, well, we actually came in after the house.
I, I just remember when I was working on zoning, I saw the notice was for...
I, I noticed that was zoned agriculture back in 2004, so, maybe I'm, I may be wrong.
Maybe I'm mistaken, but we, we had changed it after we built the house.
So what if Marty sells his?
Yeah.
Marty be moving, not me.
He's gonna sell it to you.
I would take Marty's barn in my neighborhood any day.
It sounds to me like, if you just make the request of us to go with the, uh, the rural estate, that we can agree to that.
Well, we can, we can forward it to the town council, and we can now amend, if there is some kind of...
You, you read it.
Protocol issue, then they can deal with that, 'cause all we do is recommend, we, we don't make any legal decisions here, so...
So, would it be good if we had him say that he's, he's wanting to change it to...
Yes, I think we would need to get that on...
That's where it was named.
Well, he did say that.
He said he would accept it.
I'm good with changing it to rural estate.
Okay. RE five.
But then the next, yeah, so that would be good. We'd have to put up designation.
Right, so if he's happy on rural estate five, I talked to Sean, and he says it's, you don't have to re-notice it as long as you're discussing that, some change.
He just said he was good, so...
That's what I'm saying, so we're okay to pass that recommendation on, we don't have to re-dos the meeting or review or anything else. I just wanna verify with Sean, and he says it's fine, good.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you just know correctly that the council? Was that right?
Well, no, actually, doesn't need to be that easy.
We should put your comforts on, thank you. Um, all right, so, I move that we close the hearing on the zone change of, um, AB one three seven seven ten. Okay, vote. So, then, we're gonna...
Make a motion that we send this off to the town council as a rural estate.
RE, RE five.
RE five. Uh, zone change per AB one three seven seven ten to town council.
Vote.
Aye.
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 Guess that gets you out of the heat. Then this next lot, we can deal with it. All right. Now, here, here's where we, here's where we get a little, little tricky. All right, this is another one of those...
That wasn't tricky.
It wasn't supposed to be, item one three four was supposed to be pretty, anyway. Um, so this is another item that we need to amend right now by, you know, attempt to amend the agenda item, because, um...
Because I would.
Well, I wouldn't wanna say it, but if you wanna say it, fine, but...
Whatever, whatever, rule is...
Um, for, well, we're wanting to move agenda item seven up next in, in front of five, and instead of calling it the preliminary plat approval, because that's not really what we are in shape to discuss right now. It really should've been from, from day one, it should've been the preliminary site plan review. And it's, and it's not a hearing, it's to present...
What's that?
Yes. And, um, so anyway, I'm wanting to, I guess I'll just say it, I, I move that we, first of all, move item number seven up to next slot, so it'd be actually item number five, and that we change the terminology, it's not hearing, and we're not doing the preliminary plat approval, but instead we are doing a preliminary site plan review, where we won't be making a decision to approve anything on that.
That's it.
Okay? Vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, so, here is, handout of that. And, um, do you wanna explain what this, what the cabin area, it's...
Yeah, the wrong one, yeah.
So are we doing the cabin ones first, or the...
We're doing...
Seven is, is the rest of all those lots.
Seven's Redstone, we, we have to...
Well, why don't I move...
Seven, we do wanna do a preliminary plat, plat approval.
Not plat, just a, a site plan.
Yeah, seven, we're moving up to now, and that's to do a site plan on...
That's not the cabin, though.
The cabins. Well, then where is...
It's Bucks. Fine, how's the Gooseberry reserve?
Why are we moving it, I don't, I guess...
Hey, don't necessarily have to move it, because...
Just go on your order.
Go in whatever order you want. But the preliminary, the preliminary plat, we have two things for preliminary plat...
I can straighten this out for you real quick.
Okay.
I'd love it. I, I had the paperwork on this, and when I was doing all the noticing, we had these other issues in the office that we won't talk about, and I got, I was supposed to go over those things, make sure we had them all, and we did not have a preliminary site plan approval for the cabins, and that's what you're talking about, trying to look at right now, is the cabins for, so if you're looking at a general map change and that, you can look at the map for that, and then, but I did not do the paperwork right on it, and it's my fault, not Travis's. And so on the cabins, if you look at your cabin, it's not on here, and that's my mistake, but...
Well, move it.
It's, it's this one that she has, that's the cabins, and that's what number five and number six are. A general map change and zone change for the cabins. This one is Redstone. Yeah, the Redstone is the, hold it up here, file, I'll show it to you.
Oh, sorry, are we doing the site, this is Redstone?
That's, that's Redstone.
Okay, so we do three side plans.
Four wheels.
Travel on the road. Okay, I was thinking that seven is the cabins, so seven is not the cabins. So we're not moving seven up, we're going to do a site plan.
Which one is it?
This, this is the one.
Okay. Okay, so let me, so let me just restate this, so I say it right, because I, oh, I was looking at something, all right. So, for, for item number five, we are adding to item number five that we are going to look at the site plan.
That we could do in half miles, we were talking about.
Zion's Gooseberry Preserve units, AB thirteen twenty seven.
Preliminary site plan?
Yes, the preliminary site plan, is what we are looking at for item number five. And so I'm wanting to add that, so the site plan is part of number five.
But you still have to do the general plan change for the site.
Yes, we're gonna hear the site plan review.
And then the site plan afterward, or just, or just do the site?
We're gonna let it talk about, and then we're gonna do the general plan, and, bye.
Okay, I'll just try to figure that.
All right, so, second?
No, I know.
Vote? Aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right. Tell us about the cabins.
Okay. I didn't bring the big map, 'cause you guys have the maps, but anyway, it's proposed to do 100 units, uh, packing the trees around the hill of a 40 acre parcel on Main Street, and that's on the way to where everyone's going to the, you know, on Main Street to the north, on the road that goes to Gooseberry. And, uh, so before you is that, just a general site plan, kinda like when we presented it with the preliminary site plan on the, the RV part down here. Anyway, this is for some units that we would like to get designed and get the okay from the city to do it, uh, to get going on, the design work, and, uh, get the approvals through the city.
I asked a question back in January, is this a part of the PD, is it not part of the PD now?
On, uh, what do you say?
I don't know.
That actually was on a different law, but the same idea.
Oh, that was to the, that was one, two, two, that was two properties to the north. It was the very north part, north border, just right.
Well, it was probably right here.
So this is north, this one's right here, I think.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right, it was this one right here.
Yeah.
It's out by the, it's the clay hills, uh, the pumps, and the petrical problems.
Yeah, the next one, next parcel has the petrical problems.
Yeah.
But...
This is to the south.
Right now it's officially zoned OST.
But it's not part of the PD that we're talking about later?
No.
No, this is a separate, yeah. This is down, this is down Main Street. Right, kind of in the, in the area.
Where's, where's that big map on the, the one through the, you know, showing what I'm saying?
There are too many maps up here.
It's right here.
Right, when you first came in, it was up here.
Yeah, it's rural like area for this type of project.
Um, the, um, the, did, did I understand most of the crowd here visited this lot?
Not most, but, yeah, I did, did you go up and see it, we walked in?
Did we walk this lot?
Yes.
We didn't walk this part of it, we walked the rest of it.
Yeah, we went stuff in.
This is...
Uh, I don't think that's, I don't think that's, I think we were on, walked north portion, but I don't, I guess it doesn't matter. I, I just, I don't want anybody to be surprised that this is not the one we walked, 'cause I don't think...
That's the one we walked.
This one is?
Yeah.
We came out here and walked through here.
Well, the road, we took, we walked this way and up, up north, so I didn't remember walking that far north.
This was, this is, this is the, this is the hill, it's right there, right?
Yeah.
So we were, we were walking up in this area, 'cause it was...
It's very close to the Gooseberry, uh, point out to the left area.
And you have Smithsonian.
And I want that back.
So I have a question. Our subdivision requirements, which this would basically fall under due to the level of development required, that there be turn lanes on and off of the highway for access to bring people safely into this area. Are you guys gonna build turn lanes?
Turn lanes off of Main Street?
Off the highway.
I think they allow it, you have to 30 units before you have to do that.
We're also, um, uh, we have, uh, one of the other items on here is in the Redstone, we weren't on cabin right? And, uh, we also have Gooseberry Mesa project that's, uh, up there. We're trying to collectively require them to all do a study on what the traffic is and what requirements are, not do the turn lanes yet, because on the highway, um, they're, they're talking about realigning the, uh, road on Main Street and SR 59. But we are gonna require that based on their percentage, based on the estimated cost, we're going to escrow that money that, uh, is required for their percentage of the redevelopment. And so when it comes down to approving this for cabins, he's gonna have to come up with what percentage the traffic study says he's going to impact that intersection. We have, the county also is impacting that, with that road that goes over Rockdale, and there's current traffic. So, we're working together with, um, the county on this, to, I wanna, you know, collect whatever the right amount of dollars are to help do this, give that to the county, and let them realign that road, get it paid, and that's kinda what our plan is, to do these improvements all at the same time.
What if, what if that improvement doesn't get done, though, I mean, that, I think that just puts a lot of people at risk.
But we have to do it.
Well, that's why I mentioned the escrow, the escrow method.
We're gonna have to escrow the money, we have the money to do that part of it.
That creates an avenue that, that...
But if you don't get, let's say you only get, he's requiring 100,000, another guy is 100,000, now you're short 400,000, and they're gonna build 400 homes and 100 cabins, they're all coming in to, from the left turn, right turn lane, and it don't matter that you have 200,000 sitting in your bank account. So, that'd be highly, uh, I mean, there'd be dangers to everybody. You gotta have the left turn, right turn lanes being placed first, before you allow developers to, to, to do, otherwise, I mean, you take 400, that, that means just the cabins alone, they empty out, you know, and, and then, then, within a couple hours, they empty out, and then you got 100 people trying to get 100 off the highway, and, and the rest of us trying to get past it, it's gonna be one wreck after the other. So you gotta have the improvements in place, and I would suggest, rather than making it the town's responsibility, collecting money, just go to Travis and, and say, whoever else owns the property, if you guys wanna develop it, work it out, figure it out, 'cause we, as citizens, we sure don't have a financial interest in, 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 uh, whether they build or not.
Well, we have a...
And we don't have the money to help them.
On having something like this go in and have no traffic, uh, accommodations, I mean, I use that road once or twice a week, uh, you know, to go mountain biking, and, um, it's already dangerous and scary with, you know, just the mountain biking traffic that's out there. You add this to it, and Redstone, if you don't have turn lanes there, it's not, I mean, it's just...
Redstone's here.
You'll be responsible to allow a bunch of development.
That's one, that's one way to look at it. The other way to look at it, um, based on my conversation with Sean, is, is we, and we ran into this with, um, out here with Jerry Eves, you know, you can't require them to pay more than what they're doing. You, yeah, you can hold it under their head, say, "If you wanna do this, you have to pay for all the lanes, otherwise we're not gonna let you," that's an option. The other option is, is, you know, he can, um, he has other options, and I don't like those either. But what our legal counsel says is that you can do the traffic study, and you can have them pay for that portion of those turn lanes, and I've had communication with the county, they seem to be willing to, um, pay for their portion as well, which should finish the turn lanes. But if, you know, we can't, legally, we can't hold it under their head and say, "This is what you absolutely have to do, is put those turn lanes in before we even approve this stuff," that's ridiculous. Who's gonna do that?
The St. George, I mean, I see the developers at St. George building freeway exits.
Well, we don't give them permission to sell their lots or anything else until some of the stuff comes to fruition, but we're talking about, um, when you get something this big, you're not talking about, you know, we're gonna have 400 people out there next year, you know, it's a, it's a phasing, it's, um, we have, you know, it takes a lot of time to build it all, and then you gotta sell it, I mean, we still have lots for sale in Gooseberry.
Realistically, Frank told me a year ago, he said, "We can plan on about 25 houses a year."
Yeah.
So, if you're lucky. If we're gonna go spend a million dollars to build 25 houses, it just don't pencil, so we're gonna get, you know, I mean...
And so, so there's a, there's a... And so, so there's a, there's a, and we also have, you know, we have the cabin project. That's gotta pony up some money to help with these turn lanes.
Well, that's, that's my other question.
And Gooseberry Mesa, all of them have to pony up.
In addition to the traffic, I became aware today of a study that our water district had done that is saying that we can't have more than one house per six or seven acres, otherwise our water's gonna get contaminated from septic tanks.
What? No?
That's the water guy.
He is the water guy.
There's, you guys have not had a study done?
No, not that says, everything goes for our protection zone. Everything would be length of travel, which would determine anything to do with the, uh, with anything contaminating with our wells. You have the protection zones that are putting in place, anything out of that would be determined by days of travel. If it doesn't meet that days of travel, people can build. It's as simple as that.
And that's where most of our new well development is gonna be.
Yeah, and that's all just about where the well's been drilled out of how fast that's gonna get into the leach area.
Yeah.
I mean, um, I ran wells in Springdale, and I got, there was, uh, houses, Kirk Topman's house, forty feet away from the well that ran Springdale for sixty years.
And you're still.
So no, it's, it's, it's days of tra, it's days of travel. I don't know what you're referring to of this, of the six acre, because it's not a set in stone. You have the, your protection zone that's set, and you know, you can do certain things, like with Tony. You know, we've got a well on his property, he can do sheep outside of three hundred feet, he can do trees out of so a hundred bar. But as far as leach fields and septics, of course, you've gotta be outside of that protection zone. Anything out of that protection zone that would be, could, that could infiltrate into that well would be done by days of travel. So there would be a test done, how many days of travel it would take to actually get there, if it would even get in there. So it's not a set in, it's not a set in stone thing, except for just your immediate protection zone around the well.
I also wanna add to that, um, that the way this development can move forward is, um, you know, you're gonna have roads and, you know, things like that. When someone actually buys this lot, you know, five years from now, they're gonna be subject to whatever those rules are at the time, based on septic that is going on with the health department at that time. Or Ash Creek, if they come up here and take that over, we have to do septic based on what they are at the time they're pulling that permit. And so those things are probably gonna get stricter. It's not happening just today, but it's probably gonna happen in some kind of future where they have to upgrade, do a higher level of filtration and that requires, I think, some sand filtration and annual maintenance. And, you know, septic's could get a little bit more, uh, you know, but a preliminary plan review, it's still subject to all the ordinances in the future, which could be a higher level septic filtration.
Yeah, I think what we're doing with this site plan review is saying, provided all ordinances are met and everything is done as it should.
We kinda get a similar, like a green light to go start spending money on engineering, to answer all those questions that we're asking right now.
Yes.
And they work with you guys to solve any issues?
Yeah.
It's just, it's just to get an idea, like, provided everything is working like it should be, fits the ordinances, do we, you know, do we think this will be a good thing for our town?
I, I like this because it isn't trees.
It's not the one we looked at.
It is.
We, we went to a separate day, so.
It's the same one. We took you back there, Forrest.
Yeah, this, this is not one we're checking.
Oh, yeah, it is. Absolutely.
I went, I was standing right next to you.
We, we, we stood out and looked over towards town, and even Travis said, you can't see town. This, I guarantee you, you can see town, most cabins.
I can see, I can see this from my house.
I'll show you this, right here, we stopped right here in this red box, this is now where the windmill is.
No, on that, on that.
We know some of this, you can see town, we knew that.
Right, right, I understand that. That's not what it's about. We were up here.
Oh, you're talking about it.
So you didn't go to the cabin?
Yes, I did. I wanted to slide up here.
Okay, well.
That's the only way you could get to that. It does, it does have, it has some, some water, but it is not the one.
We looked at it.
Tell me one more time how you got there, just so I can do my help. You drove out this road over here?
Where's Main Street? I was looking at a little tiny, getting in isolation here.
Yeah, sorry, it, it doesn't show her anymore. But there's a nice, well, a nice road, but a road up here next to one.
I was in the backseat bouncing around quite a bit, so Travis knows where he drove us.
Where did, where did we go, Travis? Which one did we go to?
Well, you come in barely, doesn't know what to do, but I showed you, I walked you right back up there, and you said, where does your property go to? And I showed you where it went to, and it's right, right here. It's the same thing I showed you.
And then when you took us, we, we went to the cabin side.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's where I go shoot, and is where I go hiking.
You talk those.
And I'm cool with it.
So it isn't towards the back of the property, is what you're saying?
Yeah, right, it's, it's towards the back. But, but it's, the other property that we looked at, or at least I thought we were looking at.
We looked at a couple out there.
Yeah, but, but the, the one we looked at right there next to this was totally, totally hidden from town.
Forrest, as your sound goes, you're gonna be able to see stuff with this.
Yeah, I understand that. I understand that.
This is the one that has split rock.
I just don't, don't want people to, to think it was.
You see all the orange guy on the highway?
Well, Janet and I.
I'd like to see him go ahead.
Forrest, this is the one by Split Rock, do you remember that? The, the gray rock.
I'm not sure that I ever understood where.
Forrest, Forrest, he had a good point. You can see every one of these from the highway, everywhere in town, that's way better, right by that mountain. Just get on with it.
It's just a wild life, you know, I don't, I'm street life.
You know, Forrest, I think you're right. I'm looking at Google Earth right here.
I'm in the ninety-ninth century, I'm right here. I know where I walk.
Yeah, you might know where you walked, but I know where we walked, so.
You see the road, here's the road, you took off on.
But there was also the other one we went to, that your one son is wanting to build on. We went to both in the same day. Yeah, but we're not talking about the other. We're talking just about the cabin one that we did go to, Janet and I did. I don't know where you went, but I know where we went.
This is the one they went to, is this one here.
Okay, well, this.
Yeah, see, that's the one you can't see town at all, the one that's the blue, the blue rectangle, right?
Right, yeah, different.
No, no, that's, that's not, that overlooks Gooseberry.
That's not one, that's not one.
No, I'm talking the one I.
Yep, we were. And, and there's a nice lagerie back there for cabins, a lot of places for cabins. This is not bad, but it's not the place we went.
Yes, I think it's a good place, because it's got lots of trees.
Then you're gonna have like, um, like a trail that goes up.
You'll be our pool there, I'm gonna come out.
So this was the site plan review, so just kind of seeing what we see here and the ideas of things, and then they, they make everything work.
And if you're, and if you're okay with it, we can get the drone out there, fly it with the drone, come and sit down with you, and we pencil everything out, so if you guys are.
Yeah.
Are you okay with it?
Yes, Frank.
I just, I don't know, let me just start with, I don't have any issue with what they wanna do at all. I mean, that's development and it's all good. The, I just wanna remind the council, or the planning commission and the town council, that we, five months ago or so, we passed a policy that says that we will not allow any development until there's a left turn, right turn lane. And if you don't wanna stand by that, then you just have to go change it and decide how you wanna deal with it. But that's still a policy that's part of the town right now.
This one right here?
So, but that being said, so the only issue that I see is the left turn, right turn lanes. That it's a major safety issue.
Well, look at it, if you're coming from Zion, where are you putting the turn lane? But if you're already down the fort.
Well, we have the, we don't have no word for them because of the road intersection. I gotta get that without the county. I'm trying to get a meeting set up with them.
No, it's, it's.
Work out those details.
It, it's whoever owns the property, county won't care where, where it goes.
No, no, what I'm saying is.
It's a county road.
What if you're coming from Zion already?
I've been, I went to meetings with the county, I went to meetings with UDOT about this Main Street exit. And they, they said wherever we want to realign it to, whoever, wherever they wanna go, they, they're submitted and they will be fine with it. They also said that, that they don't expect to see any money for a long, long, long time from them, for them to be able to put it in. So they, so they said that if, if a developer, or two, or three, or four comes in and says, we wanna put this in at this location, and will the county and the UDOT contribute to it? Then they vote says, yeah, bring it in, and likely we can pitch in and help forward, but they won't pay for it.
But my, the commissioner I talked to.
Right now, though, I mean, something like that with the road access and all of that, that comes into play with the plat and all of that. At this point, we're just looking at the site and saying, yes, this looks nice, as long as everything, you know, okay. And then, yeah.
Here's, this party gives us permission to go do the study and do all those things that are already required.
There we go.
This is vital.
It is, yeah, so all of this arguing about select, you know, the turn lanes is carted for the horse at this point. Before they can get approved to build, that has to be in compliance, so.
We are not doing a zone change.
No, I think we can. Zone change doesn't matter. We're not doing a, we're not, we're taking up the building's permit. You can do a zone, we're doing a general plan amendment, we can do this.
Well, that's like you said, we were just doing preliminary site.
We're not doing the plat.
Collecting money is not gonna.
We're not doing the plat.
Number seven, we're not doing.
So I'm all for it.
Well, if we're doing it, that's, you need to look at these sort of things.
You can make something, um, cabin.
They want a lot of this.
Space transitions to cabins. They don't get to build cabins until all the developments is met, all of the requirements. You can do, you can do a zone change without having the plat approval.
Most things allow.
We still need to look at a lot of things. It lists the things that you need to look at, right here on the zone change. Roadways, parks, please, fire protection, schools, groundwater drainage system, water supply, wastewater.
That's on the plat.
So we, we can look at all that. No, it says on the zone change, right here. Required considerations to approve the, the zone change.
Yeah, but, you know, we all require it on the general, on, on the plat, we don't require to provide all that. That's where the engineering comes in.
If we change the zone, yeah, you can do the plat. We don't change the zone.
But it's hard, it's hard to spend money, though, when, uh, let's say you spend the money, then the zone change is not granted, and you wasted forty thousand dollars in engineering, because.
Well, you do conceptual stuff.
Yeah, but you still gotta have your zone change.
No, I get it, I, I, I know how that works. But you, you still gotta make sure that things can work. So that's all the zone chain says, is that you, you gotta look at all those things. Because if you know that you don't have water anywhere near, and you don't have access, then it doesn't really get to do a zone change. So you just, in, in the presentations I've done through the years, and you've done many of them too, on the zone change, you still address the overall, it'll come from here to there, and this to there, and without any in-depth engineering.
We're just looking at engineering right now.
But this, this is just conceptual engineering is all we're talking about. We're not talking about detailed plans. It's just conceptually, you gotta look at that.
Uh, I guess one thing.
Correct.
The zone, if you read the zone ordinance, it talks, for one thing, it talks about a major or proper road.
You got Main Street.
And, and that's, Main Street to me is not a major road. I mean, maybe it is at some.
It's never gonna be unless you allow some growth out there. Nobody's gonna pay for nothing out there unless you allow some for it.
So what, how do we, how do we allow growth without heavy road?
You approve, you approve a zone change tonight, and then we go over draw a plan, forty, fifty thousand dollar plan, we bring it back, you say, hey, let's go. You gotta change the zone.
And then they still have to get the plat in the, in all of the.
We're not gonna spend any more money unless you get, we get a zone change. Why would we?
Really? And they squish it.
We aren't gonna build anything yet until things are brought up to whatever ordinances they need to have. At this point, you're just changing designation.
I'm just pointing out that it's supposed to be a major road, where, there's, that's not happening for a long time, so.
What's the zone change is gonna lead to, about the traffic study, because we'll complete it, and then you'll have a full blown traffic study that you can present to.
I still have a, a major road, uh, I, there's a definition for a major road somewhere, I don't know where, but, uh, Main Street does not need it.
They're not gonna put the road in before they get the zone changed.
Well, we, we do need to look at, um, so that was part of, of number five. I think you presented, and we looked at the little map and all that. But we do need to, um, have a hearing for the general plan amendment, um, for this, for this parcel. Um, the current land use designation is, um, commercial slash residential medium. And we're wanting to include it under recreational area, that's gonna fit under the, the new recreation resort area, okay?
I just put, put the change in that region.
That will make it, it implies with the, with the ordinance that you and I worked on, where they can put cabins, tents, RVs, uh, the camp.
On the general plan, on the general plan.
Correct, but that way.
But for the zone change, it'll just be cabins.
Well, that, that's what they want now. But for the general plan, if, when we, if you vote on it tonight, then that creates that general plan designation recreational property.
But then when we do, yeah, that's just on the general plan, but when we do the zone change, it will specify cabin or tiny home park zone.
Right, right. If that's what they want.
Well, that's what they apply for.
No, I agree with, but that's because they didn't know that we have one that a hundred times better for them.
Let's look what we got now, what we're really, we've been talking about stuff for years.
Well, I think you're, you're planning on just cabins, you weren't planning on RVs or tents, right?
Right.
Okay, the idea was that, the reason we liked it is because they're gonna be nice cabins with downward lighting and set back, and, yeah.
Decent roads.
That's, that's what we liked with the site plan review. We're talking about yurts or tents or RVs over there, so. So, yes, I, um, moved that we open the hearing for the general plan amendment. To, um, to amend the general plan, so it's not commercial residential medium anymore, but then to amend it to recreational area. Vote?
Aye.
Aye? All right, so. We should change the general plan so it, I mean, having a discussion about this, it's a hearing now. So, does anyone have a problem with changing the general map from commercial residential medium to recreational area?
You? Yes. Pimp wheel Smithsonian again. Um, I'm situated, so I look at from Smithsonian to Canaan Mountain all the time, and every morning, I can hardly see the mountains because of the dust. And that's since they've improved that road. And now if you're, you're approving, you know, their project and Gooseberry project, and I don't know, did you say that other housing project was gonna come off of there too? I mean, I, I can't see, we can do that without that being paid.
That will be part of the traffic study idea, right?
Yes.
Well, no. Our, our.
Well, no, that's not gonna be determined.
Who's got responsible for what turn lane, but, but I agree with you, and that's my whole game plan, is to try to get all of us done. But we can't get it done without these guys writing a check to help us make that happen. They're not gonna write a check.
They're not gonna write the whole check, though, I mean, we pay.
The county, I've had a conversation with one of the commissioners about this already, and he says, what we need to do is just come out and pave that road. Because, you know, we, they came out here, and you remember all the dump trucks for two months, dumping road base and grading. He says, we've already got everything there, we might as well just put a layer of pavement down there, because it's already in place, they can just pave that thing and go from like Gooseberry to Turnoff to the highway.
So we would get their approval, their promise that they would do that before we would do any final permitting for these people, like the others.
Pull all this together at the same time, and let's, let's make this whole thing nice, but we need developers that are willing to help, you know, with, uh, things like water lines. You gotta bring a water line to this campground, clear from the tents across over to Main Street. Now, what's that gonna do? Only have water over Main Street. I mean, someone else is gonna have another good idea, and, you know, this is, this is how a town grows, is with developers and.
Marty, can I ask something?
Yeah.
Was this, uh, the county has bought three hundred.
Was this, uh, the county has about three hundred acres, uh, below Rockville. And they are gonna turn it into a parking lot. They want a second access into Zion National Park. Instead of going up through Rockville and Springdale, they want to pave this road all the way down Crybaby Hill and go over by Grafton. So, this whole road at one time is gonna be paved to go to their parking lot, the second entrance. They have planned for Zion National Park, for the southern entrance.
And part of the reason they wanna do that too, he says was economic. And I was, I looked at him funny, cause I just thought tourism, when they did that. And he says, "No, economic, because they have hotels and all these businesses in Zion, they can't get help during the off-season." Because a lot of, their help comes in during the off-season, they work the hotels. And he says that we have Hilldale and Apple Valley that could use jobs. And this would be a, a natural byway that would allow economic growth in both those communities. Because now we have, and so this is the county telling me their ideas, so why do you wanna hurry up and get this done? Because they feel like it would help us for jobs, because now it's just a quick shot down there to get jobs in Springdale.
So, this is a, when, when, or all of us, I think.
But I agree with you, that we've gotta get those, I agree with you, I a hundred percent agree with you. Cause we can't, that thing's a washboard and it's terrible.
That's what I'm saying, it's not a major road.
It makes, it makes it really, it's hard to do. Of course, we're just passing it up.
Right, and that's why, and then we're supposed to look at that stuff.
We will.
We will.
Yep, we're supposed to now.
We're just doing a general plat, a general plan amendment. And then after that is the hearing for the zone change. So, for right now, we're just having the hearing on the general plan amendment to designate this area as, um, recreational area.
Did, did we explain to everybody at the parcel, uh, the west fourth of the parcel is commercial and the, the east three fourths is residential? We're, we're making it sound like it's all one designation and it's not.
Well, the current land use designation is commercial slash residential medium. And we're changing, we're wanting to amend it so the general plan is recreational area.
But what I'm saying is part of it's commercial and part of it's residential.
It's on there.
Yeah, so it's all recreational. Yeah, it says, that's why I said commercial slash residential medium.
Well, most people wouldn't take that, it means what I'm saying, but.
So, does everyone understand that the parcel is at the front side, commercial, and the back side residential medium density?
That's fine.
All right, so any other questions or comments about the general plan amendment for this parcel?
Um, yeah, I do have one more comment. Um, I guess with last meeting, we talked about the general plan. We took all the commercial off of that and went away with it, so everybody was pretty good with it. Now we're back.
No, because we're not making it commercial. We're wanting to change it to, to the recreational area general plan.
Well, it's still commercial.
That's, we're, we're.
It's gonna be cabins and small homes and it'll be.
Two.
Well, the good news is, is that this isn't finalized yet. This is something we're just looking at.
We're gonna do, where's that giving you?
No, the, it's the, the legal news is that that is what is still on the books.
Right.
So.
I, I feel like this project is better than a tall hotel.
Yes.
And that was the original plan, that spot. And they heard our reaction to that. They heard it and they, you know, they may change it.
It's actually, it's a lot more, not, not as far, it was a lot more.
So, are we still talking about the general plan or are we good to close this hearing? Okay, so I move that we close the hearing on the general plan amendment.
Is that?
Vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, so what do we want to do?
I'd like to see him go forward with his, uh.
General plan?
General plan.
And change it from, why do we probably have to make, say the words? Make a motion that. Forward to.
I'm getting tired.
I know, me too.
Well, let's take a, a motion for the general plan amendment approval for Zion Gooseberry Preserve. Portion of parcel, I have to say all of it?
Well, just to be safe, yeah.
Huh?
Yeah, just to be safe.
Okay. Approval for Zion Gooseberry Preserve units AV one, three, two, seven, portion of parcel, including Northwest One Fourth and Northwest One Fourth of section twenty-eight, township forty-two, South Range eleven, West SLB and M, current land use designation, commercial.
Change it from that too.
And we're changing that to, uh, residential and recreational.
Not, not residential, just recreational area.
Recreation.
Yes. Did you get all that?
I, I'm just gonna copy.
Okay, copy. Good idea. We're wanting to make sure it's on the spoken record too, cause we've learned our lesson with that sometimes.
We're changing that to recreational.
Yes. Okay, I second.
Aye.
Do we have votes? Aye?
Aye.
All right. And we have another hearing about the same spot. And this is the zone change. Right now, it is zoned, um, open space transition and OSC, is that open space?
Transition.
No, but OSC, what's that?
Functionation.
Okay. So, OST and OSC.
It, it's just OST, I don't know where CP one.
Yeah, so, okay, to cabin or tiny home parks zone. So, that's, that's the next hearing about this lot, so. I move that we open the hearing for, um, the zone change for Zion's Gooseberry Preserve units AV one, three, two, seven, portion of parcel, including Northwest Quarter of Northwest Quarter of section twenty-eight, Township Forty-two South, Range eleven West, SLB and M. And then the, to change it from, um, OST, open space transition to tiny, to cabin or tiny home park zone. You wanna second that?
I second.
Okay, vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. So, we approved to change the general plan to recreational area. So, it seems like. That would lend itself well to this being a recreational area zone, which was the cabin or tiny home park zone.
Yes.
But I, that's just my opening statement about that, so. Any questions, concerns, comments about that?
Are we okay, this is a four hundred and eighty acre parcel, we're just rezoning forty acres, is that okay with everybody? I'm not sure, I'm not sure I have a problem with it, I just, it doesn't seem quite right.
Yes, cause this is gonna be recreational and the other, uh, is gonna be residential, so I think it's.
Uh, since we are changing the zone, I would like to ask, uh, the, let me, let me double check the. Well, we don't seem to have an application. I was kinda wondering who the, the, uh, there seems to be some conflict on who the owner is. The, this says standard development, the county says two thousand and May and, oh.
Yeah, we have an affidavit in there, it's the same person, he's two thousand and May and he's standard development.
Right.
Maybe they didn't give us a signed affidavit, so. Any?
Any questions? I make a motion that we close the hearing. I'll be three.
Okay, I second. Vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
To close the hearing?
Oh, aye. Trying to get a handle on stuff.
Your state and Nace State are. It's okay. All right.
Okay, Redstone.
And no, we have to decide.
No, we gotta vote for them to do it, you know, so I can say. Maybe I won't.
That's what you were working on for.
Maybe I won't, I don't.
You'll surprise us, either way, all right. So, what are, what are we thinking about the zone change?
I think, I, I make a motion that we send a, a zone change application to the council for Zion's Gooseberry Preserves AV one, three, two, seven, you can just go ahead and copy it.
Yada, yada, yada. But you have to.
Portion of parcel, including Northwest One Fourth, Northwest One Fourth of section twenty-eight, township forty-two, South Range eleven, West SLB and M, from OST to cabin or tiny home park zone.
For, to approve it now?
Yes, to approve it.
Okay, I second.
Aye.
Aye?
I was waiting for blank, may, I guess.
I, I have to abstain, I don't think I understand it well enough at this point. I, I need to understand it better, I'm a little.
I, I need to go visit the law personally, cause we should have argued about this law.
We are talking about the cabin law.
Okay.
Is that Redstone?
No, that's not Redstone, we're, we're.
Okay, let's, this is just the cabin, along Main Street.
Same one, the general plan amendment.
Yeah, we just did the general plan change, making it recreational area. And so now we're wanting to make a zone change. Now, it's recreational area. Okay, so.
I change my understanding to aye.
All right. And, and so we have.
You have a three.
Okay, so, Harry's. All right. Well. We're kind of, we're at eight, almost eight thirty.
I know. I've got two more things.
Well, that's, because they're, they both involve, it's like two other site reviews and possible zone changes. But I just, this, these, these last three things will take a while.
Can we just do the Redstone part and we'll leave Miles Mark for the next one?
So, you just wanna do the.
It's a, it's the same area, same deal, same roadway, all that.
Um, but all we have for the, the Redstone is the, the site plan review. We don't have anything on the agenda for, um, a general plan amendment or a, a zone change.
You have to change your zone before you can do a permit.
But, but you can present your, you can say what, what it is and where it is and, you know, get some feedback, so.
Well, the thing is, I wanna give a opinion, so. So, what do we gotta do? We just gotta do for the next meeting is get the zone change application in, or I do it first?
Well, the reason we didn't do zone change applications is because there's other problems in there.
Yeah.
Parcels are quite large. Well, can we do the, like, the plan review, whatever?
That's what we're doing.
Just, yeah, just review and then we take that.
The review of the, of the Redstone plan development? Just to kinda tell us what it is and, and then just to get some.
Commemorative site plan.
Yeah, yeah, so that's why I need to, all right, so we are.
We're halfway there.
For.
This is the property that they all went out to by the way, down Little House up there.
Yeah, we went to Little, Little House.
I'd just like to get advanced in this stuff.
Right.
All right, so, um, I do need to say that item number seven, um, it's on the agenda as preliminary plat approval. And that's not what we're doing, we're doing a preliminary site plan review. So, um, I make a motion that we change, that we amend the agenda to read preliminary site plan review instead of preliminary plat approval for number seven.
Second.
Aye, vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. You separate from, from us.
No, no, I was pre-stacking some stuff. Trying to keep track of.
I know, I'm, I'm taking up all this space right here, sorry.
Well, I'm taking up all this.
We have too much going on. All right, so, yes, we're.
Yes, we do, we do too much.
Um, so, yeah, that's what we're doing, so go ahead and if you wanna tell us about, um, Redstone Plan Development parcels, AV thirteen forty-five, AV thirteen twenty-seven, AV thirteen twenty-six, AV thirteen twenty-six, AV thirteen forty-eight A, AV thirteen forty-eight B, AV thirteen forty-nine and AV thirteen fifty-nine. As to where they are and what you're doing and all that stuff.
Well, I brought a bunch of printouts for Miles Mark, but I didn't bring these, but it's just this map right here, and someone's proposing, um, we don't have a thousand acres here. We're gonna do a half acre, kinda in the back in the trees, yeah. And then this whole back parts can be one acre larger with the whole master trail. I was even looking at the master trail right here. This trail right here, we're just, we're gonna not follow the exact green line, but we're gonna make it sort of goals, it's encompassed around the base of the hill a lot better, so it'll be a good trail.
And so this is the one that's along Main Street too. And it has potentially, how many lots?
About Main Street.
Four hundred thirteen.
Yeah, they have to get, they have to go down Main Street to get to it at this point.
Correct.
And, and so, yeah, obviously.
With, uh, with the number of lots in there, does, is there any requirement for more than one entrance and exit? I mean, we were talking about the development. No, the desert rose development. Or, or we couldn't do any more development at Gooseberry until we have a second, and now, and there's only coming home to Gooseberry.
I don't know anymore.
So, we can have.
When I, when I saw it, there was Lincoln, forty-four.
We can have this come around, when we do this, you know, we bring up a good point and bring it, uh, bring it rolled around and then Travis will get with him and then we can look at doing that enhancement on one of these accessories that already come up, if it's lines, see if it'll get us a right way out through there.
So, you can have a look.
So, cause it, it's gonna be needed, right?
Oh, yeah, it's not built in, I mean, it might be slow going, but eventually, yes, that's.
So, you're saying maybe here and where else?
Well, over here, we can come up through here and it would be encompassed with the entrance, we're gonna do a good, this Gooseberry.
Yeah, because another development's going to put that second road going into Gooseberry. A road we can get to the highway from, from Gooseberry.
Now, this is the one that you have on this map is Canaan View, right?
Yeah, we renamed it Redstone.
Okay, are you gonna be drilling well?
Oh, you never know. If, if that's where they're, if that's where they want, uh, cause we're just wanting to work the district, if that's where they wanna punch one of them in, that's where we'll work with them on that.
Yeah, there's, there's water, several springs out there, there's water out there.
And so there's, there's some more work that needs to be done and we'll get that work together, so. Just have a, mm-hmm, pretty picture for you. I've already got the concrete work done now.
So, it's like any other development, it'll have to meet all the standards and safe roads and outlets and outlets and all that stuff, so. So, yeah, this was the area that, when you got back in there, you really couldn't see.
Right, well, yeah, I remember that, the other one, one street. Um, but we are talking planned build.
No, it's gonna be half acre lots and one acre lots with roads and streets, uh, to the city standards.
Oh, nice one.
Right, we don't want.
So, it's subdivision, not, not.
It's subdivision.
Okay, well, it says planned development on the agenda, so, maybe that changed, I don't know.
Doesn't it say that on the plat yet?
It doesn't say.
Oh, well, I, this is a Redstone Plan Development Parcel, so it's, I don't think it's officially PD Plan Development, but it's just the.
It's just, it's a development plan, but it's a subdivision per your.
It's a development plan, but not a plan.
They're using the term differently than they are.
Yes, they're using it with. Yes, they're using it with this.
Oh, okay, well, that's, that's like ten hours work.
Or else you get paid overtime.
Uh, yeah.
Paid anything at all, gonna be zero times zero.
My buddy drew after this.
Yes, time gonna have zero and an hour.
It's all down with the shit.
Yeah, right. Bring some meat. Whatever I have.
But these are gonna have free spaces, they're gonna have walking paths that are available to the public in Apple Valley.
Possibly horse trails, right, that's the part you were saying it to.
Yeah, so I see that this is a big plus for us.
I mean, I think, I think a lot of this, I mean, I know I'm speaking for myself, but I don't think I'm alone. If I had like a billion dollars, I, I wouldn't mind just leaving Apple Valley small and not, you know, yeah, but I don't.
We don't.
And so we can't, we can't stop development, but what we can do is at least channel it in the best way possible for, for us.
And, and this is a very nice development. And a nice area that can provide the town with a lot of, 'cause I know there's a lot of, of well development that could be added up there. The Water Witcher's home itself.
Any other questions or whatever? So you'll, you'll do whatever you need to do and application and all that, so that later. All right, so, um, I make a motion that we table items eight and nine on the agenda.
Do we do the same discussion on Miles Mark or after all, in a place? Cause I brought some new maps.
Just, just to, to show us what it is? Okay, yeah, no, no decisions, just, just to show some, show and tell, show and tell. Okay.
Cause I brought some new maps and, and all this effort.
This still looks to bed, right, along the street.
So we are, we are tabling item number eight. We're not gonna talk the zone change or anything for Miles Mark, but for item number nine, um, again, officially amending the agenda, so it's that we will be, I'm making a motion that we will call number nine a site plan review instead of the preliminary plat approval.
Just like the other site.
Did we do the, do we pay the preliminary site plan on Redstone?
Oh, it, it was just a discussion, we're not approving anything, it was just for them to, to say what they're doing, so, it's a presentation. So, yes, I, I make a motion that we edit, amend the agenda instead, number nine, instead of saying preliminary plat approval, that we are calling the preliminary site review, site plan review. Just to hear a presentation. Since we have, since we have our own maps.
What is this?
To add some map collection.
Is this, is this the same one that's on the, the agenda, wasn't it?
It's on the agenda.
It's down here, but we're just doing this.
Well, no, I mean, it, it was on the agenda.
Okay, so, uh.
Oh, yeah.
Probably what we ought to discuss is the road and get your input, is what I've got here is reducing the thirty-two lots to twenty-nine, because we talked to the mayor, we wanted, oh, I, I, I think these are the wrong ones.
Wrong one.
Yeah, but we'll get you on. Travis is going, wait here, sir.
Thank you. Thanks.
Which, which one?
Oh, six is it?
Huh?
Oh, wait. There's this next one.
Oh, okay.
So, do that to Michelle.
I changed it from thirty-two roadway lots, as I mentioned, then we would have to have another exit road, except limited it to thirty or less lots, we still have loop, loop, the road up here. But it's gonna have a single access by the water, it's right, right here on this road. The water tanks are right here.
You said you want it to not have more than twenty-nine, right?
And not, not to do the road, but that's what we wanted to discuss with the number nine, because it's more than. So, see what your thoughts and concerns are, and we just.
Well, keeping it at twenty-nine makes it so you don't have to have that secondary road.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I like.
So this puts an awful lot of traffic, awful lot, right, on Rome Way. It seems like there ought to be a more direct way out to the highway.
We do, there, there, there is, um, there is a right of way that's already been granted, an easement, road easement, that goes up to this property, and the slope coming down off of there is about twenty-nine percent.
Wait, which, which one are you talking, what, where are you talking?
I measured thirty-four percent.
Oh, that was, the, the one that is.
I'm just using contours from. So it's about twenty-nine, twenty-nine percent average when you go down, when you measure it.
So, did somebody say, you measured a different number?
Mike said he, said he measured thirty-four percent on the Travis.
Can that, is there any way to?
This wasn't my favorite way to do this, is going, doing a, a scar and all that, it's, um, I'll, I'll give you the feedback that I've gotten so far on it, um, you wanna say something?
Sure. So fire code is ten percent on any, any of that stuff, you probably already know that, so. An apparatus is not gonna go up too much of that stuff that's over ten percent, depending on what kinda apparatus we have. And, uh, so, I mean, there's probably things you can do. I, I'm not tied into the engineering side or, or knowing how to do that that much, but there's probably other things you can do to try and get that grade reduced, I don't know.
Thirty foot, uh.
Is it?
Some of the, um, conversation we had today on it was, he says, heck, yeah, I'd rather have a secondary exit off of that than worry about the scarring.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that, the scarring or anything, like, like the mayor said.
But the, um, I've, I've talked to the attorney about this stuff, and, and he's, he says, uh, City St. George, they allow them to go up to forty percent before they say absolutely no development. Where our ordinance right now does say thirty percent, absolutely no development, and so if that is a cliffside or if it's more than thirty degrees, we can't technically go up there and do this without changing the ordinance to do it. And I'm not recommending that we necessarily do that, I'm just saying that that's how it would have to happen if it's more than a thirty percent. Um, when I was talking to, uh, the attorney about it, he says there's ways that, um, you can, um, mitigate some of that. Let's say, for example, there's only fifteen percent of that is over thirty percent. So if there's areas that's less than that, then, then they can say, okay, we can let this one slide because it's only a, a fraction by this much percent, if, if the grade is more than that. I'm not sure what the full grade is.
Well, here, here's my question and concern, um, does this become a, a, a public road then, I mean, if we're responsible for it? So what if, you know, we get our biannual, what is snow, and somebody slides off of our road because we haven't maintained it?
Were you doing your fire route?
Well, it's, uh, you know, you're gonna have to build a, to stand it if we decide to do it that way anyway, it's, so, you know, engineering, figure out what that is.
Is there no other way to get a road up there?
I don't really answer that.
What about on the other side? I haven't, on the.
East side is.
East side, it was, I mean, logically, I'm, I'm, I'm only looking at it from, with the golfer's eyes. You're trying to get water from over here over Main Street. It seems like as the bird flies, if you can get off this hill fall over to Main Street, then you, you do everybody a giant favor, because number one, you, you bring water from yourself a favor from here to Main Street, and now we have another way in and out in, in Apple Valley, so that solves that problem, rather than waiting for. But I measured it yesterday, you're looking at five thousand feet as the bird flies, but I, I didn't have contours enough to say whether.
Except in one mile.
Well, yeah, whether it's even possible, um, so, but you're gonna spend more than one mile trying to get the water from anywhere else, it's gonna be way more than a mile. So, this, this was, I was just trying to find a way to solve two problems at the same time.
I'm proud of you.
And I especially like to do that when it's for your money, not mine.
Well, that also solves a third problem, because now we don't have to worry about the bridge over.
Right, it would solve, I mean, we, we could lift this, this, uh, uh, well, we still don't have a left turn, right turn lane, but if that came in on Main Street, that would solve, that would connect it whole, everything together. And your parcel would be, uh, uh, you know, way more valuable.
But, but you're still planning on having a development over Long Fifty-Nine that will have a connecting road and a bridge that, that is.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's, so there will be that other way in and out of.
But right now, we don't have that, so it's a million dollar bridge, you know, or here, he's gotta bring water over there anyway, because you have to connect the water supply. So if you took it from here all over.
I think that makes it solve that problem.
I mean, you have to go through John Page's property, but from what I remember, but I think John will be.
No, I think it's magically on.
Well, just a little side.
A couple little ways, I got a few, so.
So anyway, it's just a thought, because a hillside ordinance, like the mayor says, there's no way you'll get past, you can't cut that road in. It, it exceeds the, the thirty percent that's allowed by Long Shot. Uh, so, and, and the other thing, of course, we still have the policy in town that says no development anywhere in this part of town.
How many units can we put up there and just approve it tonight?
You can't, none.
No, I'm just saying, and you said that.
We're not approving.
I know, I'm just saying, I know, just to cut through some of this stuff. You said you can't have more than thirty units on a road, right?
Okay, let me, let me, let me give you, uh, some of the, the obstacles you have. Number one, we have a policy in town, this part of town, that you can't develop any more lots until we have, uh, another way in and out. Because fire code says thirty homes is the max, and we probably have two hundred homes here, or a hundred and fifty homes, far, far exceeded. Uh, so that policy would have to be changed first.
Because that's how I'm driving it on that.
Yeah, because the only, Chevron is the only way in and out of, of this, this town.
But can it be an emergency access? I mean, it doesn't have to be for the public, it could be just for emergency vehicles, correct?
Well, that's all, that's fire code and, and.
I was thinking of some towns I worked with, Folklifeville, when I was their engineer, we just did, uh, emergency accesses, and they have the key, you know, the fire key, which the fire department, they have access, it's an emergency access.
It just has to be approved by the fire department.
Exactly.
So.
But I'm just saying, the policy in place right now, that was adopted by this plan information and this town council, there's no development until that problem's solved. However they wanna solve it, I'm not telling you how to do that, but.
Well, we can solve that one, huh? That'd be easy to solve.
Well, you know, build the bridge, then that problem's solved, but.
Well, let's do it in baby steps, the bridge is gonna come.
I know, that's.
You know what he's trying to do is, is say that if we gave you an emergency.
We're giving that, exactly.
Yeah, no, no, I, I just did that, I mean, the city of Hurricane made me put in half a mile of road base and all this crap and stuff, I've got easements for neighbors and because, uh, as a, as a, uh, and, for roads, so I can continue my development, otherwise they wouldn't let me. Because I was in the same pickle as, as you are, I, I didn't have a second exit.
So, we'll, we'll work with you.
That, we just need to solve that problem, but the town still needs to lift that, change that policy of no development until that's.
I mean, I can just see where this could be a win-win, where we put in a, a whole other road, you know.
To Main Street.
Well, I was just talking about the other, uh, you know.
Go along John Page's.
The whole bunch of cabins, you know, but, um.
The whole point is, the whole point was this, is to reduce traffic on Rome and, and through town.
Right.
That was the whole point.
None of these roads that we have are collector roads in this town, they're all residential roads.
They're bare minimum for what?
Bare min- minimum residential roads, so to add.
Don't park on them.
Yeah, I mean, to add a whole bunch more traffic to another residential road that drive past Michael McGlock's house, all of them, is, that was, I'm just using his, him as an example. So anyway, that was the first thing. The second you need, you need to is, if they lifted that, then you still need to solve, you can't have any more than thirty homes on the dead end street.
Twenty-eight?
Thirty.
No, he's talking about counting those that are just.
Yeah, you have ten that are already on that same road, so you can add twenty more without having a, uh.
In our first phase, we just wanna do fifteen.
So we can do twenty lots more right now?
If, if you count Juniper, which comes in, you're, you're looking at about seven more.
So anyway, the numbers are still, I don't know how many is there, so you just have to look at that, and then, um.
You just can't, have to count from up the hill.
And then you have another issue.
Juniper's up the hill.
That just, that gets rid of it all, then we don't have to send.
You need to buy another parcel, because you're not connecting to Rome Way. There's a, the latest property in between your development and, and, and Rome Way.
I bought that, too.
So if you own it, then, well, then just move it down and, and, and connect to it.
There you go.
Cause you have to, you can't develop a subdivision of an easement off somebody's road. That road, Rome Way, has to be deeded and extended up to your property. Uh, and so those are the obstacles that I know of that you're, you're, you're up against. And I would love, I mean, I think this idea of not making another fell this act, really bringing water over that direction would be phenomenal. It'd be win-win for everyone.
And if you don't wanna go down Main Street, you could go over ways and then go down and connect on Marty's, North Roman or whatever it is, run, run all the traffic through Marty's.
We'll just go right through John Page's property.
Someone told you. It's, it's a much better road than Rome Man.
So, so being that this is a preliminary site plan review.
It's just the.
Yeah, so you, so you know, yeah, so you know what you're gonna do?
Yep.
We know what we're gonna do, we're gonna solve.
Solve problems.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. All right, so, are we supposed to? We don't have minutes to approve, right? I didn't put mine. It's okay, thank you. I did, we do have the right, but I, uh, like. Yes, I second.
Aye.
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 I'm glad you did the same way that I did.
I heard.
I got this.